Good evening. Um, he's kind of welcoming you. Page. It's day. I'm. My name is Councillor. I'm the Chairperson. And I please. I'm screen. Uploading. I remind anyone. And I mean. Please can I. Members. And remember. Finally. But it's. That's been. Eight. Councillor. Williams. Um, councillor, um, councillor. We're introducing. Um. About you. Hi, it's. So. Me, um. Um, and. Um, we also have Adrian Fox and Alex Eberner, who have. On neutrality. Around. And in the room, we have Stink and. Item. Um, for management of open space, go. Of stealing. And for the future of waste recycling. Have. Um, and for item ten, the air quality. Update. Of David. We have filtered virtually. Thank you. Uh, we also have. So welcome. So. Time to. Thank you, Chair. I want to try to trace the council for it. Councillor. Um, councillor. So. Um, next slide. Of us.
Chair.
Second.
Second nomination.
Are there any?
Chair, good. Be aware, something apparently the sound is not very good, because.
Uh, thank you, Councillor. Certainly sounds a little not. Yeah. Um, Councillor. Oh, councillor, uh, with some real aids. Do you have any declarations? No, no declarations. I don't have any, um, chairs announcement. I do have one slight fee. Um, I noted many. Quite a lot of acronym. Um, some of them. Councillor. That's. We now come on to item five. The minutes. Uh, members of committee first. People's. Minutes.
Great.
Yes, agreed. Thank you. Right, we now come on. Items. Um, I've spoken to Mr. Gunion. That he. Top. Um, I know, um. I. Um. Hi, hi. Answer to ask. Okay, that's great. I know this too. Um, so. Actually, what? I think. Um, three minutes. Thank you. Yes, I do, and I don't have a prepared statement tonight, so I'll. Of course. So first of all, I just think. Murphy or. From legacy. At the council spoke. Open space. In particular. Um, I just wanted to mention a few that are brought out specifically. That, that we. Did a very important relation to management of. General. So the first, um, in relation to. Um. I just wanted to add the fact that we, and I believe our own communities. Patients as well have offered, um. And with. Starting days, um, and specific. And to. Acts, um, which were able. As charities. Um, that was something. Own response. Able. I understand that it would first be. Agent for. Onto this year. City and. And the second issue that we want to raise, um, is the nature of space generally, in particular, the need for rate of protection. I think we've also, um, throughout the pandemic, it's important that even small. Space, um, represent in our community. Health wellbeing. Um, but we know that they're under great development pressure, particularly. Area within this town. Um, the first, um, issue we're concerned about is in relation to the. Space, um, which ought to be. By the local plan. Have been lost recently. Council zone, council. Um, thinking of, um, sites like West Side, several sites like Barton, area around Winall Flats, in particular, the quite large. Valley that's. Whilst, um. Obviously, it's very important to, um. Councillor has. Might reach now where there are really no. Open space. It's all built on that purpose and other stress. Um, green space, with or without trees, requested carbon, they're losing it. Carbon and reduces our ability to. We're also concerned about the larger tracks recreation land, um, which are under threat over the longer term, um, development, and also need protection. And those are particularly well suited. Built in trust. Something that's. Reaching. Relation to. Paris ground and also the additional part of. Playing. Got lean protection, I think, but it's a really important legacy generation. So we would urge. Protect. Slavers, maca fields. Other brilliant areas of space. Those allow developments to build those land. Areas right now. And they could. So we think of an important legacy. Thank you. Thank you. Um.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I am. So thank you for the opportunity. Particularly, I'd like to speak of taxi drivers. This. There were three hundred and twenty-nine license back in October. Thousand and eight, and the electric vehicle, which. Had to be published. Strategy highlighted the aim of getting drivers. That it did the significant air quality benefits. High mileage to. Sadly, so far, only one good electric vehicle operated. And. Thoughts to John Paul, I think should be. Gratitude. I've spoken at some length with John, better understand why. Is made the switch, but no others, and the main, the main reason. Do need the rapid charging, the. And what rapid charging. Which there is only one, that's in the coach stage. And really is. Designating. Taxis. There is another one proposed. Though I noticed tendency, the. Strategy, it was indicated to be. How the statute is. So. Do need another one. As a taxi driver, I have to be able to. That third. Power charge, get the battery to eighty percent or else. Days, but. So I think there are very significant benefits. Translating. Actually getting that. It mentions, uh, the. The, the intent to get taxi drivers. I've looked through every document on. Nothing actually said, how they are in that on that. Intentive. Mentions. Intentive. I think that may be a significant. Getting. Aspiration. In more. Benefit. So whilst I. Recommendations in that item. And. Think there are. Benefits to the case. Certainly, uh. Finally, Amtry could go back to John and have a proper station with. Maybe. Maybe, uh, one of the. Think members. Have a much better. Uh, translate. Citizens. Thanks for the opportunity. That's.
Thank you. Kate, um, Williams, we now. Councillor. Bologna. Air quality. Bologna. Um, I know that. Councillor. And, um, thanks for joining. Back. Thank, thank you very much. And, um. Councillor. Happy, so congratulations to. Eve. As committee. Thank you. So we have. Action. Um, I'm just. Um. Thank, thank you. Um, so, um, well, I believe.
Thank you. Um, I'm speaking on the. I see it in general. Turn. Yes. Right, well. Definitely like to focus. And. I want to know if it shows. Those. These comments. And potential. Take. Booting. Then to.
Instead of ask, what is the scale of renewable energy generation that you wish the local plan to encourage? Scale is the question that has exercised our group since the publication of the UK's sixth carbon budget in December twenty twenty and its subsequent approval by Parliament in June last year. Its goal of fully decarbonising the electricity grid by twenty thirty-five is incredibly ambitious. Its detailed projections of how solar and wind technologies must bear the brunt of this transformation are stark. With an indicative land requirement of a hundred and fifty thousand hectares of ground-based solar alone, a six-fold increase over current installations. Now. For input to the local plan process. When Agnes Airfall publishing an energy report shortly so that we present evidence for this view. Uh, the report will be a discussion document offering alternative targets for consideration. Given also that we must get a move on with immediate opportunities, our report also shares our experience of close involvement with solar farm planning applications over the last eighteen months, with suggestions for however our concern might more readily accept their role in the climate emergency. And councillor therefore your agenda this evening is to try to give priority to big ideas such as your plans for a solar farm on council land. Uh, when I has strengthened this capacity to engage your stakeholders working with local renewables, we're very keen to assist where possible. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Gunion for that contribution. Um, obviously, we can, we can come back to those points. Um, I believe we have Mr. Fox joining us, um. Uh, remotely this evening, so he can also help us to, to address that point. And, um, can I just ask, the, the challenge you made that our current target of two thousand and thirty, are you suggesting it's, it's too far in advance? What? What is it that you, you are suggesting? You said we need urgently to review it?
The short answer, which isn't easy, uh, is that we're looking for two things. Firstly, we feel that the target should be expressed in a different way. Instead of expressing it as a reduction in, uh, emissions as of present. Um, it would be for, for all sorts of reasons, it would be preferable to express the target for local renewable generation as percentage of local demand for electricity. The two go together much better. The current contribution of local renewables is only sixty percent of the demand for electricity locally. And we feel it should be a lot more than that. Um, so it's a mixture of, um, enhanced ambition and just straightening it out.
Um, thank you for, for clarifying that. That's, that certainly helps. And I'm, I'm sorry, I can't actually see you because you're right behind Mr. Lincoln, but thank you. Thank you very much. Um. I know that councillor Murphy was hoping to introduce this paper. Mr. Callan, do we, do we have her?
Councillor Williams.
Sorry, sorry, Councillor Williams. I do.
Yeah, I think she's now available on the. And can you?
Hello.
Yeah, hopefully you can hear me. Um.
So you're gonna have to speak up, Councillor Williams.
Okay, I will. Um, so I suppose to introduce this report, um, the main idea of the report, it's considering our progression towards the carbon emissions in relation to energy and the challenges in achieving both the council's carbon neutrality ambitions. It touches on progress made to date on generating renewable energy. It also provides an update on the progress of the local plan, within which climate change and carbon neutrality is vitally important and one of the defining issues. Finally, the report outlines the potential for community energy projects in the Winchester district, how community energy groups and projects might be supported, and how the council can help. I welcome the thoughts and the contributions of the members of the committee. Thank you, Chair.
Um, thank you, Councillor Williams. I think we could all, we could all hear you in the room. Um, Mr. Lincoln, do you, do you want to take us, um, through the report any, any more than that, or do you think that's enough?
Um, thank you, Chair. I was intending just to say a few words as a bit of setting of the scene. And then, um, colleagues, Adrian Fox and Alex Eberner, who are both virtual, are going to just say a little bit around specific elements of the papers, where they've been, the paper where they've been doing work, obviously Adrian on the local plan and Alex, who's been involved with the discussions about the county council and community energy. So if that's okay with members of the people, we would like to just say, just say a little to, to expand a little.
Um, that would be really helpful to the committee. So please, please go ahead and turn. Thank you.
Thank you. Will do. Um, so, good evening, members. Um. So, so just in terms of the first part of the paper, the, there's progress today and setting the scene really. Um, it, it highlights how our carbon neutrality action plan published at the back end of twenty nineteen set out a couple of key priorities around energy. Um, I would acknowledge at this point, Mr. Gunion's comments around that, and I think they're very fair comments and, and really helpful ones, which we can factor in as we continue to review and update and look at the, um, look at the, the plan and sort of bring it up today in terms of progress and, and our future direction. Um, so there were a couple of things that were identified in the plan when published as key priorities, and we highlight them here, obviously. One being the, um, the move to a hundred percent renewable energy tariff, which was completed and our states teams negotiated and signed us up to that, uh, last year. So, so that has made a big difference. One of the things we do need to be aware of, of course, is that what that means is, is clearly we are common, um, we have zero emissions effectively from our electricity supply, but that doesn't take away the need for us to focus on reducing consumption. Um, so, so that ties into some of the other works that we're going to carry around, geographies and things. So, so although it's good in terms of the numbers, but, you know, it's really important we continue to focus on reducing that at those consumption levels. Um, and the other part, again, Mr. Gunion made mention of, um, our desire to, to look into the potential for sort of larger scale renewable energy generation. Paper does touch on some of the small scale stuff we've done on roofs and things. Um, again, as Mr. Gunion mentioned, in terms of the sort of sixfold increase that, that we don't believe might be necessary in terms of renewable energy, it's clearly important that, that we and others look to larger scale renewable energy generation. So that is clearly something that's on the agenda still. Um, and, and a piece of work that we need to continue to, to sort of work on, um, in light of the, uh, the increased likelihood of, of more renewable energy being required. Um. We touch in here on some, uh, interesting innovative projects we've been undertaking with Marvel Zoom and with Beta. Um, they've been, been projects that have sort of, um, been very interesting for the team. They are very, um, they're good, they would, they were going to achieve in terms of those organisations, but what's really obvious is that on the scale of the district, our, our contribution by those projects is, is just a scratch. So one of the things that we have to really learn, those projects have just come into an end now, um, in terms of their sort of completion and, and then the sort of energy being generated on those sites. What we really need to focus on is what, if any, work we continue to do of that type. Um, it strikes me that there's a little point in us continuing to just physically put, um, so the panels on, on buildings roofs, we, we would have to scale up enormously to make any kind of difference at a district level. So there's something around how we look at the scalability, the, the, our role as possibly promoting, promoting the concept to businesses, maybe the model, the way that we've accessed funding to help make it happen. Um, the sort of, um, the, the business model that we've got and the financial model that we use. If we can, for example, share it with local businesses to, to give them some comfort and some confidence that it's actually something that they could do and which could work for them. So we really need to look at the scalability of some of our projects and those kind of things. I think there's definitely some learning we may find in those. Um, uh, and, and then the other thing, we talk about some of the, um, solar PV that we've put on our, um, some of our buildings. Just a little thing, one of the things that we're doing as a team now, we're definitely working with our estate team and our housing team to try and, try and make sure we've got a better understanding of, of the impact of that across the whole portfolio and also the monitoring of the impact that that makes. I think, I think, uh, one of the things we've done in the past is these sort of fairly piecemeal, um, sort of installations that we've done, we put them in and to a degree, assume that they, they make a difference. And I think we really need to just sharpen up our, our efforts to really understand that, to follow the data, to see where, what difference they're making, so that we can, we can target our future investment in those kind of things in the right places. Um. Uh, yeah, solar farms, um, Mr. Gunion's already, already highlighted the importance of, of solar farms and, and, you know, uh, I think the paper just touches on, um, the fact there has been some of those sort of private developers and things that have done that. So, so that's kind of just setting the scene, I think. And at that point, uh, I would like to hand over to Adrian, um, online. He can talk us through a little bit to the, the local plan, which I think would be of great interest to members.
Thank you, Steve. Um, good evening, Chair and members. Um, so just briefly in terms of my, um, kind of angle in terms of local plan. As councillor, um, Williams clearly put out, it is a defining issue for the local plan. And I have raised mine, uh, kind of my item, the local plan, raising the ambition. And I do think that's, that's a very good way of putting it, that we do want to raise the ambition. And we do want to make sure that it's included in the local plan in, uh, kind of its entirety. And it's a divine issue as part of the design process that people have it at the forefront of their mind. We did in the, um, strategic issues and, um, priorities document outline a number of ways that, uh, we could address carbon neutrality. And we did that with a collaborative approach with WINEAC, and we've had subsequent discussions with WINEAC, um, particularly about this issue and, uh, the issue that was just raised by the speaker about obviously how we can, uh, encourage and have permissive policies about renewable energy. I do think that's really important. We did a call for sites, a call for green sites. I think we were one of the first in the country to do that. Um, we didn't get a great response in terms of the green sites, but nevertheless, we put it in people's minds that the local plan is not just about housing, it's important to, uh, think about green sites as well. And when I say green sites, I mean about sites for renewable energy, um, carbon neutrality and obviously, um, nitrogen offsetting. We do really want to push in the local plan this agenda, um, but there is a kind of caveat, um, that I am obviously working within what's the building regulations in terms of obviously where the government is going with the building regulations and how they see the role of local plans. And also, uh, a key thing that's changed since we produced the last local plan is about the local plan viability. So anything that has a financial cost, uh, in terms of a policy in the local plan, I do need to weigh that up with all the other requirements, such as affordable housing, education, everything else we want. So there'll be a kind of a, a palette of things that we want to achieve, and we need to balance those to make sure obviously we deliver a plan that is actually viable and deliverable, and that will be a key test of the local plan examination. But we're very keen to work collaboratively with WINEAC, um, and really raise the bar on the local plan. So I'll stop there, uh, if I may. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Fox. And I'm sure you'll stay online because there probably will be some questions from members in due course.
I think, Chair, could we just ask Alex Eburn to now just say a few words about the community energy?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everybody. So I'm now just going to briefly introduce sections 2.24 to 2.31 in the report on community energy generation and the local electricity bill. So this section of the report begins by just providing an overview of the current community energy landscape nationally and also outlines progress in terms of encouraging community energy generation schemes across Hampshire and Winchester as well. In terms of progress so far, Hampshire County Council have teamed up with Community Energy South to support the development of community-led energy groups and projects throughout Hampshire. And they've also recently been successful in a bid from the UK Community Renewal Fund to actually support further community engagement and community energy development across Hampshire. And within that bid, Winchester is listed as one of the areas with the ambition to increase the community energy generation. So we're hoping that this bid will ignite interest in community energy development across the Winchester district. And we're very much new to this. So it's an opportunity for us to get involved as well. The report also then just goes on to the local electricity bill as well. This is a private members' bill which aims to enable local electricity generators to actually become local electricity suppliers. And just to make a note on section 2.30 of the report, the numbers there have also increased since this was first dispatched to this meeting. In section 2.31 as well, the report hasn't been brought to cabinet and we're currently waiting for advice on an alternative route for approval. So I unfortunately won't be able to answer any questions currently about that route of approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Eburn. So members, we've heard the introduction and we've all seen the paper. Because some of us have obviously seen it twice, so it's kind of thorough, thorough going over. Do we have any questions who'd like to start us off? And councillor Pearson, you were quick off the mark.
Thank you very much, Chair. One particular question. It's an interesting paper and I rather enjoyed it, but a couple of points of accuracy I'd like you to correct. First, I don't think reference paragraph 2.1, I don't think actually exists any longer. It's now called EON. And I really think that should be updated. And I know where Marwell Wildlife Park is, but I don't know where Marwell Zoo is. Would anyone help me on that? And the real question is reference to 2.1b. And this came up originally in the original climate emergency document. Anaerobic digestion, which is going to become relevant in the paper that councillor Todd, I imagine, is going to introduce. Is that correct, Martin? The waste paper?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so but also the wind farm. I don't know if Adrian has any idea where these might be located. Because the history of certainly Winchester district regarding planning commission for wind turbines is not one that suggests that wind turbines would be encouraged by communities. Referring back to, we had what, eight wind turbines were going to be built in the northern part of the district and that was shut down. Well, I would say deflated, they don't build, they haven't been built yet. But the anaerobic digestive is also an interesting one because of course they use methane gas. What are you going to do with that gas? So I don't know if anyone can aid because as that is, it's going to come up again in the wastepaper. But on page 15, it's referred to there and there's a crucial point. Because it links then down to what Alex has just been saying about the community energy projects. Are you suggesting that communities should have their own anaerobic digesters and/or wind turbines?
Thank you councillor Pearson. So I think that was a specific question about the difficulty of if we were to be promoting a wind turbine site, how would you address those community concerns? I do note in the paper, however, that it does say that for now there's been a focus on solar farms because of some of the difficulties that you mentioned. But would that be you, Mr Lincoln, or would that be Mr Fox?
Probably Mr Fox in terms of the detail. And I suppose I just wanted to make the point that in terms of the wording there, that's the wording that was lifted out from the plan which was published at the back end of 2019. And I think the intention there, it was a 10-year plan, clearly it takes us through till 2030. So I think the intention there was to leave our options open, to be broad around the options that might be open to us and available to us over that extended period without constraining us. Clearly, as we move forward, we'll look at the right options at the time based on current thinking and technology and et cetera, et cetera. So I don't think there was any firm commitment in there to any specific or necessarily all of those options. It just gave a flavour of the types of thing that might be in our minds. But I think, yeah, Mr Fox might maybe have said a little bit more about the current planning landscape.
Just let Mr Fox respond and then we'll give you a chance to come back, councillor Pearson.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Steve. From a planning perspective, there's clearly been a shift in terms of the government's kind of priorities away from kind of onshore wind farms to offshore wind farms. And a study that was conducted quite a few years ago now, I think identified the most potential for wind actually in the district was in the South Downs National Park, which obviously we don't have any control on. So I think in terms of the wind potential in the district, it is limited. I think there's more potential in terms of solar opportunity. But I think as Mr Lincoln indicated, it just keeps an option open. But I think personally, from my understanding, there's more potential from solar than there is from wind. And I think that's the way the government is going in terms of obviously their preference for large offshore wind farms rather than onshore. I hope that helps. Thank you.
Councillor Crumweson, how many other people do we have reading? Okay, councillor Pearson, did you have a direct supplemental to your question?
Well, the follow-up was specifically, Mr Lincoln suggested 10-year plan. Are you saying that you imagine that these things will be in place in 10 years or is it just a vision?
No, I think it simply leaves us options open to us depending on the direction that things go in terms of national planning policy or other such like things. I think if we'd have listed two options there and then in the future, if something different came along that was, or one of those other options was a better or more viable option, then there's a risk that we're constrained by the words that we use. So really, they're just indicative of the types of thing that might come forward over a 10-year period.
Thank you, Mr Lincoln. And councillor Cook?
Thank you, Chair. My question is actually to Alex and it refers to 2.3, the local electricity bill being made law. It said that it needed 400 MPs to sign it. But at the moment, we've got a figure of 278. He seemed to think that those figures weren't up to date. I know this refers to November. So when would we be able to see figures of exactly what has been said when he was signed up for it? Thank you.
Alex, do you have those up-to-date figures of the level of support?
Yes, I do have the up-to-date figures. The changes are that now it's been confirmed that 445 councils have shown support for the bill. So that's including town and parish councils as well. 727 local and national organisations. And then in terms of MPs, the number's gone up to 291 MPs. And as I said in the report, it's currently in the second stage of House of Commons readings. And that's scheduled for the 25th of February 2022. So within the next month or so, it will be discussed at the second stage.
Thank you councillor Cook. Just on that point, I wondered if I could ask Sadie a question. I note in the paper that there are implications, resource implications suggested if the council were to want to sign up to this bill. I just wondered if you could say a little bit more about what those resource concerns are.
Thank you. Actually, Alex has done the research on us adopting the bill. So would you mind if I pass back to him apologies? Sorry, Alex, you're back on the last beat.
Yes, of course. Yeah. So with that, it's very much at the moment in the drafting stage of the bill. They've recently discussed this in the House of Commons and the Energy Minister is actually meeting with the organisers of the the bill to discuss a bit more about what the bill could involve, what it could entail and what it would actually look like if it was put into policy. So at the moment, the actual resource implications aren't clear, particularly not down to a council level in terms of what the implications may be within Winchester council. But what the bill is advocating for is for increasing amounts of local energy generation and empowering local producers of energy.
And just a second supplemental for me. You said 445 councils have signed up. Of those, how many are district councils at our level, as it were, of local government?
Yes, of course. The latest figure that I know is in the report, which is listed as 79 local authorities. Unfortunately, in the actual data that I have available, they didn't list the actual number of local authorities. So I had to do a bit of digging around to actually work out which ones were local authorities. But 79 is the most up-to-date figure I have.
Thank you. Councillor Crumweson?
Councillor Westwood.
So councillor Westwood, you're next.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to get a better understanding of the first section, really, what we've achieved and how we can build on that and grow it forward. So in section 2.1b, we talk about to achieve carbon neutrality by 2030, significant increase in local renewable provision required. In section 1.2, we talk about initiatives to be done, but any move into larger energy generation schemes would require a level of expertise and experience that doesn't exist within the council workforce. Section 2.4 talks about the good work we've done with Marwell and with BIFDA. But then it talks about the difficulties of moving on more broadly. So my question is that all of these are initiatives that we've started that generate benefit where we don't have the skills, expertise, capacity to take the force at a larger level, we want to have an impact on the district. Could you just comment on how, your thoughts on how we can take this forwards to the next level to make a significant dent in the targets that we've got? And your thoughts on the partnerships that I believe would be required to enable us to do that, whether that be directly with independent private organisations such as energy firms or such like, or through the parties such as Hampshire County Council or any other public authority that we could team up with? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. In terms of the final question, I don't think I have the answer yet as to who exactly those partnerships might be with. The answer, I think, would come as a follow to your first question. And I think what we would need to do would be to bring in external advice and guidance consultancy to help with that. And that was kind of the point that section 1.2 was trying to make, that this is a specialised area. It's something that this council certainly hasn't in any scale gotten involved with in the past. Potentially, if we were looking at larger renewable energy sites, they have the potential to be financially quite beneficial for the council, but also carry some significant financial risk with them in terms of investment. And clearly the fact that it's a fairly long-term payback. So we would certainly need to bring in some external consultancy with some experience in this area, who's done this kind of work before.
Do you have a follow-up, councillor?
I do indeed, yes.
Thank you.
I understand the point about us investing in it. So it's not really where it's coming from. So if we look at our energy companies in the UK, which are struggling unless they are the the sources of the energy, so the renewable companies, they're very happy at the moment. But if you look at the companies that are providing the domestic final piece to their homes, they're not happy with the price caps and et cetera. We have a market that we can expose to energy companies who want to move from fossil environments to renewable environments. The line of question really is, is there an opportunity to partner properly with organisations, private or public, where we can bring some value to them in terms of opening up a marketplace, providing sites and the ability for them to build and place their energy generation in our district with the aim of providing the local energy we need to address to our businesses and our residents. But we act as that intermediary and add the value that we've got in running this area to those private companies who are really looking at ones that have enjoyed their businesses forward. True partnership in that respect and the risk being taken away from us and moving it on to those partners. Do you want to profit or you want to make profit on the back of that relationship? That's what I'm thinking of.
Mr Lincoln, just within that, a question I've written, not quite the same, but my question was, do we know of other councils which are using that kind of partnership, like a partnership model or sort of working in that way? Often, a first step is to go to others who are doing it. So it sort of follows through, but maybe there's a step in between.
I think in answer to that, we know there are other councils who are ahead of us in this and who have made steps in this regard and are showing some positive signs. I don't actually know who they are yet. That is one of the things we need to look into. That is one of the first steps that we need to take. It's very early days for us in this regard. So we're right at the start of the journey. So absolutely, there are, clearly lots of this kind of work has been done in other sectors as well. But it's certainly for us here as a local authority, something a bit different. So there are people we can speak to. We haven't done that yet. It is one of the first things that we need to do, absolutely. And I suppose just trying to go on your sort of supplementary, councillor Westwood. You know, clearly this is stuff which is kind of, we are just getting into and it's not my area of expertise, I have to say. So I'm sure there will be opportunities like that, absolutely. I think a lot will depend on the, I suppose, our risk appetite, absolutely taking on all what you say. That a big element of the approach is about minimising that risk and exposing us as little as possible to that risk ourselves. It's definitely a bit like the looking at other councils. It is one of the key steps and stages we need to do. That is taking us a little bit further down the road from where we currently are, I have to be honest. But it's definitely a direction that we need to go. We, I think our role here clearly needs to be an enabler, a facilitator, and we need to help make this happen without necessarily being ones to do it all ourselves. So it is absolutely, and it'd be interesting to talk to you and your members who have understanding and experience of this stuff outside of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr Lincoln. And I have to say that the fact that when you're looking at the placing of solar panels, both at Marwell and on the BIFDA sites, the fact you're immediately thinking, how can we scale that up? How can we work in partnership? How can we do a facilitation goal to give us the impact that we want? So it sounds like you're beginning to think in a larger scale in terms of knowing what we need to achieve. Councillor Tipper, I believe you were next.
Thank you, Chair. And some really good discussion, good points. And it was really good that Lincoln was very responsive to all. So it was a really positive discussion, I think. Jumping back into the community energy part of the paper, because I'm quite interested in this. And so Alex put Alex in the hot seat again. So I'm noticing that the Hampshire County Council and the community energy, so the Southern Energy Research Group, part of that partnership is to determine the interest in the district as to whether there are groups that can be set up. So my questions for Alex are, do we have any current interest in groups in the district? And if not, are there any? And if not, are there any good examples from elsewhere that we can encourage groups to model on? And then the third question is, what resources from which the city council are needed to do anything serious in this area?
Alex, are you able to answer that? Thank you.
Yes, of course. Thank you, councillor Tippett Cooper. I think I'll start by just outlining some models, some best practice examples of community energy. And there are a couple locally as well. So in Hampshire, we've got the Hampshire Renewable Energy Cooperative that have been up and running, which is a prime example of one of those cooperative local energy groups which are sort of making waves in the local area. Even in Basingstoke, there's a couple of energy cooperatives. Southampton's also got one led by academics, which is called Solent Achieving Value from Efficiency. So what we're seeing right now is that there's been some cases of people who are pioneering in community energy, but acknowledging that there's plenty of scope for increasing this throughout the Winchester District and Hampshire and the South East as well. In terms of resources that we needed, we're currently trying to find out a bit more from Hampshire County Council about the progress with their current project and also about what their plans are for scaling this out to Winchester. So we're not too sort of aware at the moment of what the resource implications will be. But we hope that with the funding that's coming our way, we would have some money aside to work with Hampshire County Council and actually do some meaningful community energy initiatives in our local area. Does that answer your question?
It certainly does. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you very much.
I wondered whether Mr Gunyon, given your involvement with renewable energy, actually, whether you knew of any others locally? Any community energy groups locally?
Hopefully, you can remember the energy groups.
Sorry, are you using your mic? Thank you.
I'm slightly cynical, but I think that there are more community energy groups in the UK than there are community energy projects. It's a difficult area. But to answer your question, you mentioned Basingstoke. The most interesting local one in progress is Overton. The village there is doing fantastic work and they've got some serious funding to get their community energy projects underway, to show that they're not quite in Winchester District. Beyond that, you need Oxford, as most of the most successful examples. Our view of our community energy is it's fantastic in principle. When it gets going, it gets fantastic results. But the gap between the beginning and the end is immensely complex, immensely long. And I confess, we're not prioritising this area at the moment. I don't, I'm not quite sure what you should make of that, but there is no current interest within Winchester District. The Hampshire County Council project ran for six months. They had the best people, community energy cell. They had some interest in Hamilton, that's the only one. Last I heard, that stumbling over the South Downs Plan, the health requirements, we're trying to get it going again, but that's all there is. So yes, let's support community energy, that a plan does that. But it's not going to shift your target.
Thank you very much. Mr Lincoln, did you want to add something?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to add really that I think that, you know, as per the carbon neutrality plan, community energy wasn't central to our approach in that. It's something which is gaining a little momentum. And therefore, we wanted to sort of reflect that and pick up on that. Clearly, the Hampshire County Council funding creates an opportunity. And I think that's what we see there. It's an opportunity, a level of funding that we certainly as an authority wouldn't be able to invest in that area of work. Now, clearly, it's across the county. But I think we see that we're hopefully quite a proactive district in terms of our work on sort of climate and energy. And if we can, we can try and respond to the opportunities there, liaise with our colleagues at county when we can find out a little more about what exactly they have in mind. We want to try and just make sure that the opportunity that's there with that piece of work and that funding, that we get the best best share of that where we can to Winchester. And if we can make some progress in this area, then that would be a help. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm conscious that time is moving on and we actually have quite a hefty agenda. Councillor Croissin, do you have more questions?
I have two. I have councillor Kern and finally councillor Westwood.
So councillor Kern, if we can come to you and just before we go back to councillor Westwood, we'll just check the, have councillor Fern or yourself, have any questions that you want us? So councillor Kern?
Thank you, Chair. My question kind of relates to a little bit what we've heard from councillor Westwood already. Obviously, partnerships are going to be incredibly key to this. We can't do it on our own. We've got a target of 2030, which is just eight years away. I think we've all seen the last couple of years, time goes incredibly quickly. And there's obviously progress we've not been able to make over these last two years. Do you have any kind of anticipation on timescale yet when you'll be looking to these partnerships? Because I think it's clearly we can't do it on our own. We're going to need that that buy-in from other partners. I just wondered from a timescale perspective, what we might be looking at so we can really get close to that target as soon as possible?
Specific timescales, no. I think our initial focus has been on assessing the land that we own to identify if there's opportunities there. Clearly, what will then come from that is if there are opportunities that seem worthy of further investigation, we'd then need to look at them. You know, the model for taking that forward, you know, is that something we would want to try and do ourselves? Or go alone? Or is that something we would want to partner up and bring in a partner and investor to work with us on that? So I think our starting point has been to to try and identify site of sites that might be suitable. And then that would be the next stage. I think the intention would be we'd like to start developing some thoughts and ideas within the next 12 months. So I don't think we see this as something which is a long way down the line in terms of in terms of the 2030 target. Clearly, Mr Gunyon's highlighted the extent and the scale of the challenge in developing renewable energy. So, you know, we can't wait, we can't leave it too long. So yeah, I don't know if that gives some idea of timescales, not too specific.
Thank you, Mr Lincoln. Councillor Fern, did you want to ask anything? Do you have anything, councillor Croissin?
No, thank you. I think my questions have been covered by various other councillors' questions.
Did you want to come back, councillor Kern?
Sorry, I just wanted to just add a little note on that because I know a lot of places where the solar farms may well end up is in rural communities. And I know that there's an issue with one of Bishop's Water Mole, which I know there's planning going through at the moment. So just wanted just to add a note on those timescales. Obviously, there's that community barrier we need to try and break through as well, which I know can hold things up quite a lot. So I just wanted to add that as an extra note.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Kern. I'm sorry, I missed you. I wanted to come back. Councillor Westwood, this will be our last question.
That's a very quick question. Thank you, Chair. The paper's entitled Energy Policies stroke actions. And you've got actions, I like to see targets and numbers associated with them. But there's very few indications of scale of potential activities out of this paper. Would it be possible to add in some sort of scale potential for these particular activities?
Thank you, Chair. It absolutely would. And that actually ties in with something Mr Gunyon mentioned earlier that I was hoping there'd be an opportunity to just reflect on. Where was there some talk about expressing the renewable energy targets in a slightly different way? One of the pieces of work which I think we mentioned, we may have mentioned at the last meeting of this committee, was that we're looking shortly to commission a piece of work to develop a roadmap, for want of a better phrase, particularly in terms of the district and the urban footprint, where we're very aware that we have some good intentions, some good ambitions, and not too much in terms of detail. So we're looking to commission that piece of work, which would look at energy, but also the other key strands and areas of work. And actually look, you know, the key part of the brief that there will be to identify some metrics around what's going to be necessary to get us to where we aspire to be by 2030. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Lincoln. I wonder whether councillor Murphy wanted to say any, sorry, councillor Williams, I'm so sorry, I just have a little bit on my night.
That's okay.
I know you're keen, you mentioned it to me the other day, you had siblings to eventually put in some metrics.
Yes, I think one of the things that we've talked about is how we can show and put those measures in, have those metrics. I think for us as a council and for our residents, them being able to see our success and what we're doing, what the challenges are and what needs to be done, I think they're the things that allow us to actually show really good progress. We've had chats about how we do this. It's not a simple process. It's not like, you know, how much electricity have I used in my house or any of that. These are quite complicated and we have to balance the logistics of finding and getting all of those, you know, different numbers and data against the actual resources that we have to do actual things. So it is that kind of, you know, we talked about this yesterday as a team, how we can manage and do that. I think generally what we're trying to do is this report is looking at these sort of big ideas, the big targets that we have as a council, but also working within our limits and understanding that we cannot do this alone. And we, you know, that, you know, as a climate emergency sort of portfolio, everybody is working with other parts. Without Hampshire, we aren't going to. Without working with local business, it's not going to happen. And I think that's a really big realisation that is, you know, something we know, but also it's great that it's coming loud and clear from everybody in the council and members of HEPT that actually they want us to work with partners, they want us to sort of move forward and engage and do that. And I think that's really important.
Thank you, councillor Williams. We now move into debate. I just wanted to, my members, before we do that, that as a committee, we are being asked to comment on, so if we could do this within our debate. The principle of using council-owned land for renewable energy generation, although I agree on that. The opportunity for the plan to promote and encourage increased renewable energy generation across Winchester District. There's been quite a lot of debate on that. So I think we're all pretty aligned around that. The potential for community energy schemes succeed in the Winchester District. So those are the three things we were being asked to to comment on. I'm joined to keep this debate to just 10 minutes and no more. So who would like to go first? Councillor Pearson, again, just straight ahead.
Yeah, I'll try and make it less than 10 minutes, shall I try? As you said earlier on, it's a very interesting paper. To me, it's a visionary paper. What worries me is that we're still in this phase where we're looking at consulates, not consulates, but commissioning people to do things for us. And this sits me time and time again. Whereas what I would define as an action, and I suspect councillor Westwood is thinking along the same lines of it, but just not there. And that does worry me. But there are things being done, let's face it. So we are planting a planning mission for solar farms. We've got, I think it's what, one, two, three, four to five from the southern parishes at the last count, including this councillor, there was one big one in his patch. We've got two already between ourselves and Bishop's Water Mole, there's another one going to the planning post. But again, it's what worries me, what Mr Fox said, is that we're having to wait for a lot of this for an upgrade in building regulations. We have been doing that for at least 10, 12, 15 years. Building regs are notoriously behind the game all the time. And it worries me that we're waiting for that, we're not doing any contingency planning. I like what Mr Gunyon said on behalf of WINAC. Do we have any idea of what amount of energy we want to produce in Winchester District? It doesn't seem to be. Rather than concentrating on emissions, well, if we're producing renewable energy, there are very limited amounts of emissions. So we've got to concentrate, what do we need? We've got a growing population. Do we have any projections of what the power needs going to be in the future? Along the same lines, the water boards are doing in Hampshire, what needs are of future amount of water. We don't seem to be doing any planning ahead. So right, okay, we need that amount of energy produced within Winchester District or within Hampshire or within the partnership. I think construct Winchester District at the moment, because these things don't come cheap. If you're going to put in a solar farm, Winchester just couldn't finance it themselves. Nor could a community group like the Hamilton Greening Committee. They couldn't even begin to think about financing a solar farm. It's, you know, that's a pure pipe dream. You need a lot of money for that. So we're just forward. What do we need? How much energy do we have to produce? Then say, right, okay, how are we actually going to achieve that? It doesn't seem to be. And that worries me. Otherwise, I rather like, I enjoy reading this paper. There's a lot of good stuff in here. But, and it's the but that worries me.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. Would anybody else like to add to the debate? Councillor Westwood?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just looking at the recommendations. So picking up your points, Chair. In terms of the principle of using council-owned land for renewable energy generation, I'm not against that at all. I think it's a good thing. But I would caution that we probably don't have the land that is required. And we need to have more broadly, so if you're looking at all the sites through asked for land, she the process, I'm out of my depth now, Chair, but along those lines. Because the land we need for this is probably not in our hands. Equally, I suspect Hampshire County Council owns significantly transit land in this district as well. Are we going to be looking at potential in that space? So yes, I'm really the principle, I think it needs to be broadened. Local plan, great. I would question the timing of the ability to deliver out of the changes to the local plan and the necessary building regulation changes, what would actually deliver to us in terms of have the ability to drive renewables in the timeframe that we're looking at. And the community energy schemes, I think that comes with a bit of cautions we've heard. There's a small sum of money being allocated and I think we need to understand that what our best and wisely we can use that going forwards to find a good viable partner to get a first success as a demonstration and scale out from that, much as we've done with other schemes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Westwood. Councillor Tippett Cooper? Oh, apologies, councillor Tippett Cooper, it's councillor Kern. A battle of who goes first.
All very polite on this, to come to you. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to comment on, to see obviously the potential for community energy schemes succeed in Winchester. I think the whole green movement really needs to come from within all of us, all the residents within the district. And I think maybe there's a part we can play with messaging and communication to engage more. You know, I think we're slowly waking up as a society to the impact we're having. And, you know, it's great to see more and more people starting to recycle and more more people installing car charging points in their own home. But maybe there might be something that we can do from our perspective, from a messaging point of view and an education point of view as well, to actually educate and inform and let people know more about what the incentives are as well. You know, I think I spoke to a few people about this and I said, what do you know about the community energy schemes or or not much? So maybe there's just something as a messaging standpoint we could consider as well, of really getting that message out about our targets and what you can do to be the difference within your community. And that might promote more conversation.
Thank you, councillor Kern. And there were carbon reports done, weren't there, Mr Lincoln? The whole district? Do you just want to say something about that? Because it thinks...
Sure. In terms of the detail, that's another one that, yeah, Alex is the man. But in terms of that piece of work, as councillor Kern was speaking, you know, that was really obvious that that kind of comes along as, it very much ties into that piece of work. I know it's something which, when those conversations were happening and were being led by the organisation we commissioned to do that, we kind of hoped that something might come out around kind of community energy. I think people at the stage that they were at on their journey were thinking smaller scale, that they weren't almost the art of the possible hadn't quite got to them. So I think that's probably part of the next stage. I think you're absolutely right. Big role for us in terms of awareness raising, getting people to understand what power they do have as communities and individuals to play a part in this. As others have said, I think it's not going to be the solution that's going to make the district of a neutral boat. It can play a part and again, create that sense of movement. So yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. And councillor Tippett Cooper, then? Thank you.
Well, just really now to say that I completely agree with councillor Kern and pretty sure in terms of Mr Link's answer. And I think we shouldn't sort of just... I don't, I don't think anyone has dismissed the notion of, um, community energy, um, groups. And you're looking at, um, uh, our neighbours at West Solar, Solar Cooperative, who created a 2.4 megawatt solar farm in June 2014, a power of 650 homes now. 485 members of that cooperative raised two and a half million pounds. That's an amazing example of a community coming together and, and serving, providing their own energy. I'm sure in the district there are sort of villages and areas like that. And, um, it's, uh, is encouraging. It will be encouraging then.
Um, thank you councillor Tippaker. Um, we've come to the end of my 10 minutes. So unless anyone's got a burning comment they would like to make. Um, councillor Williams, did you want to add anything? I know you sort of summed up before and made some very important points. Um, if not, I will, I will close this part of the meeting.
No, um, do feel free to close that part. Thank you.
Um, so I, I wanted to thank councillor Williams and officers for bringing this paper to us this evening. Um, I would actually also like to congratulate, um, the climate emergency team, um, for everything that they've achieved in this area, given the actual limits of resources in terms of those, um, bodies mainly, um, uh, and all the things that they have actually done. Um, something you said, Mr Lincoln, that struck me, um, was you said, we need to both concentrate on, um, uh, renewable energy generation, but also on reducing consumption. So as well as looking at what we might need in the future, the point that you're also looking at, how can we stop people using more than they actually need? So how do we reduce consumption? Um, I, I didn't get an over, it's sort of a resounding comment from the floor about whether as a committee, we are in principle supportive of the use of, using, um, council-owned land. I think there is a support saying we do need to find land in which to put more renewable energy generation. But the idea that we have to maybe look wider than our own land to, to do that, working with Hampshire, working with others. Um, but we do welcome the emphasis in the local plan. And we also, um, welcome the idea of supporting, um, the community energy schemes through communication, perhaps through leadership, et cetera. Um, again, an important point I think to note is in all of this, it's scalability, isn't it? And you've made that point. You recognise that, you know, we have a big target, a lot of carbon to, to remove, a lot of energy you need to produce. So it is looking at what we can do to escalate and how we can do it. But thank you for answering all of our questions to the officers online and to the, it's Lincoln in the room and for being open. And thank you, members, for a very interesting and detailed discussion on this paper. Right, we are going to move directly on to the, um, next paper. Um, which is the management of open spaces scoping report. Um, Mr Lincoln, this is, is you again. Um, I'm going to give you the opportunity to, um, introduce the paper unless would it, is it councillor, clearly it's the cabinet member, but I don't think it's for this this evening. It's councillor Williams, this paper. Um, is it you, Mr Lincoln or councillor Williams who wants to introduce them?
I think it's going to be me unless councillor Williams says different.
I'm happy for Steve to introduce it. That would be great if he's in the room. I think it's easier.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Lincoln. The applause.
Thank you, Chair. And it's going to be a very, very short introduction because I think the paper is pretty self-explanatory. It's only intended to be a scoping report to really, um, set the scene for papers that will come forward to the committee, uh, at subsequent meetings. Um, the purpose of it really was in the work programme, there was, um, there was an item in there around management of open space, hugely broad subject, covering many, many facets. Um, something which it would be almost impossible to cover in a report and we've been here today to talk about it. So, so we just wanted to, to just bring this to get some clarity. What, what we set out here is what we think um, would be both interesting, um, papers for the committee, but also ones which would really help us take forward the business that the team is, is trying to get through. So we, we sort of propose that we bring to the, the meeting coming up really quite shortly now, actually, um, a draft tree strategy, which is a piece of work that's, that's well underway. Um, it's an area of work that, that takes up a lot of the council's time. Obviously, it's of great interest to residents and members. I'm sure members get lots of inquiries and, and discussions around this stuff. And the tree strategy will really, um, help, uh, set, um, set our position out on that uh, and how we do that. So that's a paper we'd really like to bring to the, the meeting in a couple of months' time. And then, and then the second area was around this, um, idea of management of open spaces, but with a particular ecological importance. It's a, it's an area which is growing. There are increasing sites being either handed to us or presented to us or where opportunities exist. So not necessarily just the traditional sites we had of, of sort of incidents, open space sports, which is better. But areas that require more intensive management. And it's an area where we, we're not obliged to we're not obliged and required to, to get involved in those sites, but clearly in balancing our, our ecological and biodiversity, uh, ambitions. Um, the council could have a role in those, but there are implications to that. So we'd, we'd be keen to bring a paper forward later in the year um, that would explore some of those issues. So, so it was really just to see, uh, the committee's thoughts on those as, as two subjects of a future work programme, we could share.
Um, thank you, Mr Lincoln. Um, I wondered whether you could, um, just address a couple of points that, um, Mrs Back made. Uh, there was one about, um, community tree planting, um, and, and how that's going to be, will that be covered in the report on how we deal with, you know, the offer and the willingness to, for other groups to help us plant more trees? And, um, the other question she raised was about the grid protection of open space which is under pressure for other purposes, um, council's own land, pockets of space, et cetera. Um, and she also talked about the golden trust, the larger tracts of lands, the larger parks, which we obviously have no intention of using for anything else. However, that could be an issue going forward. Um, so those were her questions. And one question I had, um, originally when we were looking at the open spaces paper, um, one of the things that people were looking for clarity on was our approach to our verges, our larger verges, what, what we do with those. I don't know whether they come into open space or they come to something else. And what was our, what was our policy around mowing and, um, you know, sort of looking at biodiversity of those areas. My slight concern is that may be missed in that second paper because it says areas of larger ecological sites like of ecological value. And I think residents and also other councillors were looking for clarity. So we had a clear policy that we could explain to people about how we do things. Quite a lot there. If you want to go with Mrs Back and then if you could address the last part, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair. Um, so, yeah, in terms of the, the tree planting, what I'll need to do is just go back and, and speak to colleagues in the team who are dealing with this stuff day to day, um, to check on that. It sounds absolutely like the sort of thing that we'd be keen to try and support, um, yeah, or keen to, to encourage and to work with, with sort of, um, just sort and others on. So I'll absolutely take that back. Um, and I will, I will also ask, I'm not sure that that as a specific item would be in the tree strategy, but certainly as part of the conversation around that, we can make sure that that gets addressed. Um, in terms of the protection of open space, I think there was a couple of elements there. Um, clearly there was some, some, some mention of the, um, the issue of, of the council or House Bill Programme. I guess that just highlights one of those areas where we, we have some tension between our, our different, um, ambitions and priorities in terms of our sort of environmental and, and biodiversity aims and ambitions and, and clearly our, our desire to build more affordable homes, which are much needed. So I'm not sure I'm the right person to answer that one, but, yeah, we're very aware of, of that tension and, and, you know, uh, certainly in terms of the team that I'm leading now, clearly we, we do our best to, to protect and defend those open spaces and, and, you know, absolutely uh, understand and agree with the sentiment around the importance of them, um, and the value of them. Um, in terms of the field in trust, again, um, I know, I know we worked with SAW on the, um, the field of trust, um, so I think, uh, the Garrison Ground. So, so again, the principle of that, I think is absolutely one, you know, the, the right sites, um, absolutely, why not? Um, you're right, you know, the, the sites that were mentioned, um, seem like ones which, you know, we absolutely would have no intention of doing anything with. So, so again, I'll take that back to the team and ask them to, uh, to sort of get some thought to that. I don't know whether there was any work already in hand to look at any of those other sites, but I'll certainly ask them to get in touch. And it was a third point, I forget. Oh, oh, sorry, verges, verges, I did write it down. Um, verges, uh, I will go back and again, I'll speak to Sue Proker, who leads the natural environment team and, and just ask whether that's something that we, we, within that second paper. Um, it is possibly slightly different from what we had in mind in terms of scope, but, but some very, some similar sort of sentiment there. And I am aware, um, although I don't know all of the detail of, of the day-to-day stuff, I'm, I am very aware that the, um, the work they've tried doing on the verges and the wild planting, uh, there was a mixed, um, response to it last year. I think the, the, um, the ambition was very good. We possibly, some of the communication around it wasn't ideal. So, so, yeah, I'm very well aware there that there's some some awareness raising that we want to do to try and make sure that we can really, uh, make the most of that sort of initiative. So I will certainly, uh, speak to Susan about whether we can, can weave that into that second paper, Chair.
Um, thank you. I, I think it's, um, for members to have clarity. Um, so, you know, if we didn't have that, we'll stay on that. Um, back, I just wanted to check, have we, did I miss anything? I just wanted to check, um, from Mrs Back, whether I got all three points that she'd raised.
You did. Thank you. That's a great summary.
Thank you. Um, uh, we suppose. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'd like to follow on actually from, um, the Chair, councillor Ferguson, with regard to verges. I think unfortunately, uh, if this now is the right time to make this statement, that the, the planting of some of the wildflowers, um, they could not be perhaps sometimes positioned at a junction. And, uh, that was causing some, some problems. So I think before they're planted, that they do need to consult the nearby neighbours to, to fully understand what effect that will have. Um, I'm all, I'm all for the wildflowers, um, but, um, that they need to be planted strategically, I think is the best way to put it. Thank you, Chair.
Um, councillor Pearson.
I, I think these verges to manage, it depends exactly whether the verge is. And we're so managed by the county council because they're deemed to be part of the highway. So managed by the parish councils because they're, uh, crucial to what parish council are doing. And so maintained by IDHIRD. As councillor Cook quite rightly said, the issue that people are most concerned about, verges are allowed to grow wild, till to a real junction. It's very dangerous. So the, the, and you find that's reflected in the cutting regime as to how many times a year that verge is cut. If you're talking about a verge in a council estate, for example, um, if that met, well, that, those are usually, um, county highways. And then it depends as to if there's any red plants in there, an orchid, for example. Uh, so it may get one section of verges isn't cut because there are orchids in there. Uh, and, and others are maintained. And, you know, that is an issue. So it's, it's a big issue that Stephen trying to avoid because in fairness to Stephen, he wouldn't be expecting to know this. If, if Mr Williams was here, he might be able to say something.
Thank, thank you councillor Pearson. I, I am aware, but I think it's because of that level of complexity and confusion that our residents become confused. So it's just an issue that we, we grappled with before when I sat on this committee but didn't share it. And I know originally the desire was to try and address, address it to have clarity. Um, do we have any more questions? Councillor Kern.
Thank you. Um, I was just wondering, uh, at a 2.6, when it's obviously proposed later in the year, the brief overview of the current sites are managed. I'm picking up a point that, um, Mr Back made, um, about like the legal standpoint on that. Would there be potential for, for the report to include like an outline in the potential kind of protection that's maybe required for some of those sites that we're looking after? Um, just as a kind of outline that may be useful as guidance as we, as we move forward. If we, we've got a bit of an outline about those sites that maybe need some protection that definitely shouldn't be considered for housing at some point, might be useful for future discussion.
Um, can, um, Mr Lincoln's nodding, which I think is a, a yes. Okay, thank you. Um, councillor Tippaker, will you go next?
Hopefully it's another yes answer, a straightforward yes answer. Um, and it's a good opportunity this to actually kind of shape the paper for it, because it's going to cover a lot of area of those, as I said. The couple of things I think might be worth looking at with it is something that captured the, uh, the unanimous spirit in the full council chamber last week, uh, was ecology around, uh, ecology issues around the rivers we're responsible for, um, within the open space area. I don't know if that kind of is in the same ballpark as this or not, but believe that for the draft is the cover. And the other area is whether there's sort of rewilding opportunities within our district as well, when, and when you're considering the open space part of the paper as well.
Um, so, Mr Lincoln, I believe you were trying to narrow the paper, but the key to, 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 to add more, but, um, but you did ask for our, our, our response, which we, we knew. Is there any, if there are any more questions, because I'm really conscious of the time, we still have two large papers. If there's no more questions, oh, sorry, that's probably snared it to you.
Thank you. Hopefully this will be quick. Um, I have a recollection that in the paper there was reference to a member briefing early in 2022, which I took to be a briefing on the kind of verge management, et cetera, stuff, which as councillor Cook has mentioned is quite a hot potato in various locales. Um, and I think that the, the time period when it gets most, uh, difficult is sort of people through to June. So if we could have a briefing on that subject in good time, we might all be in a better position to kind of at least say how it is, even if it's not quite how some parts of the community actually want it to be.
Um, I believe the paper refers to a briefing on the biodiversity action plan. Um, but, um, I, I don't know whether there's the opportunity within that to have a small element on verges.
I, I suspect that opportunity is there, absolutely. Um, again, I'll, I'll note it down and I'll, I'll make sure I speak to Sue about that. It'll be her team who would undertake that member briefing. So I'll try and make sure they're aware of that and can, can weave that in. And, and, and I also just felt like, yeah, we can say early 2022, so.
Chairman, it might, it might be a good idea if somebody looks at the environment side, there's a whole section on this, and yet there's no reference in this paper to it.
Um, so, Miss Lincoln, that was just a challenge that have officers took any implications from the Environment Act. Um, we can again just note that down, I'm sure. Um, is, is there any debate on this paper? Um, you know, it's quite a short paper. We, we do have quite many things to go on to. Are we, are we happy to, to move on from this? Um, yes. So, so I think we have given you, um, feedback, Mr Lincoln. Um, and if it's okay, we'll move on to the next paper. So, um, we're now on to item nine, which is the future of waste and recycling. Um, we have, I believe, a presentation, um, and obviously we have a paper as well. Um, councillor Todd, are you introducing our section or are we going straight to Mr Williams to do the presentation? Which way round are we, are we going to do this?
I, I'll just say a few quick words, I think, and then, uh, Mr Williams will make the presentation. So.
So, sorry councillor Todd, uh, my apologies. We actually have, um, uh, Sarah White, who's been waiting very patiently. I do apologise, Sarah. And thank you to councillor Corwes for reminding me. She, she is sadly sitting directly behind you, so I cannot see her. Um, I know you wanted to, to speak on this paper, um, Mrs White. So you have three minutes. Um, please, please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you for asking, for letting me speak with this. Um, just to say that my background in this is, is basically, I live in the Kingsworthy area. I'm, um, an active member of a few, um, community Facebook groups that very talk an awful lot about recycling and what have you. One in particular about recycling and waste, and it, it has 500 members in this group. So thank you for the, these papers and the presentation. They look fantastic. And it'd be great to see an increase in doorstep recycling that matches some of the better areas around the country. And it'd be good to see some consistency around the country. It'd really nice to see the same colour bins around the country. So when you're visiting various places, you know, whether it's blue, green, brown or whatever, you put your various recycling in. The time scales on the presentation look very interesting, but it is a bit confusing, I must say. So it's difficult to see when are we likely to be able to see that further increase in doorstep. So it's difficult to see when are we likely to be able to see that further increase in doorstep recycling? Is it this year, next year, five years, 10 years, or whatever? Just thinking about today's current recycling, my, my son's just moved into his own flat in Winchester. And he asked me what you can put in the recycling bin. Now, you'd hope he'd know, but you know. Um, so we talked about the cans and the plastic bottles and paper and cardboard and the glass in a different box. But then we talked about you could go to the Worthy Lane bin to put in tetrapath carbon, carbon cartons. You could go to the two big supermarkets, Tesco and Sainsbury's, North and South, to put soft plastic in, so bread bags, crisp packets, et cetera, et cetera. You can go to the one hard plastics bin in Sainsbury's, Sainsbury's Badger Farm, so yogurt pots, um, vegetables, fruit, salads, cartons, that kind of thing. If you get there on the right day, on the right time, because it's usually full within 24 hours of it being emptied. That's one bin for the whole of Winchester. We then have various charity projects. So we've got a lady called Laura Tarrant in Kingsworthy, these various others around the, the, the city, who collects a lot of these soft plastics, package them up in their own time, on their own premises, to send to businesses who do recycling, but at the same time getting some charity money from it. So you can, if you try very hard, do more recycling, but it's a lot of travelling around the city and getting to the right place in the right time. And there's a lot of interest in this. And we're not really encouraging people at the moment. So what can Winchester do in the interim between now and getting to the, the national, national strategy? Can we work more with the supermarkets to push that we've got plastic, hard plastic bins north and south of the, the city? Could we ask them and some of the other supermarkets to look at more recycling facilities in the smaller shops, the smaller supermarket, you know, the, 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 the small shops? Could we have more municipal recycling bins in car parks around the area so that we could recycle hard or soft plastics, whichever's more easy to be recycled? Apparently there's a project in Dublin with some residential areas where you actually have a compound, where each resident has a key to get in and put your difference recycling in the different bins, which might cope better with people who are interested in doing it, rather than put everything in one bin and hope for the best kind of thing. You might get people putting in the right things. Or do we help people like Lara and her, her friends with their charity project? So it's not all on their own premises and things like that. I don't know what the suggestion is, but we, I'm sure we could do more between now and the national strategy. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. White. And as an active recycler of anything I possibly can, I spend my, my days wandering around the district trying to find the right place to recycle it. And seldom get to Sainsbury's Badger Farm when that bin is not, is not full. I've gone in the dead of night. I've gone just after midnight, hoping to find it empty. That's how exciting my life is. So, um, we'll move on to the paper and I'm sure that indeed, of course, Councilor Todd will be trying to address some of the questions that you've raised. Um, so, Councilor Todd, apologies. Um, back to your introduction.
No, it's absolutely no problem at all. It's a very useful perspective because I think we all share frustration at the, um, level of recycling that we're able to do in the district. And you'll see some figures later on that show that even though we have the best recycling in Horne's in Hampshire, we've made dramatic improvements in the last two years, that still just makes us average and then at some occasions below average versus the rest of the country. Uh, and that's ultimately because the disposal infrastructure that we have is, has fallen far behind. Um, the, the basic design of what we recycle was put in place by the county council in the 1990s. Um, and it hasn't really moved forward that much since then. Obviously, we have made dramatic improvements with doorstep glass collections, with batteries, with electrical appliances, with carbon waste collections in car, in, in some of our car parks, and with a big increase in garden waste collections that we've achieved through the new service. So we've, we've, we've made a lot of improvements, but we are starting to see the end of the road in terms of the improvements we can make without improvements to the, um, disposal infrastructure. The way that recycling works in Hampshire and two-tier area, areas, and actually Hampshire, Portsmouth, Southampton, because it was put in place when, um, the whole area was two-tier, um, is that we have disposal authorities, which are Portsmouth, Southampton and Hampshire. And we have collection authorities which are all the districts and again Portsmouth and Southampton. Um, and we rely on the disposal infrastructure provided by Hampshire for the, the large tonnage of waste that we're talking about. Um, uh, so we rely on transfer stations, we rely on, um, uh, the material, recycling facilities where the materials get sorted. And to make an improvement through Project Integra, which is the partnership that covers the whole of Hampshire, partly in response to the government's plans for the future, partly in response to pressure from some of the districts. I would stress that there are other districts that do not support, strongly support improved recycling. Um, we have pulled together jointly with colleagues across Hampshire, and we've been part of pulling together a plan for Hampshire in terms of the way forward for recycling. So that is what we are putting forward today. And through Project Integra, and I should declare that I'm, I was the deputy chair of Project Integra, which is the partnership across the whole of Hampshire. We've put together what's called this Joint Municipal Waste Management Strategy, or GIMWAMs, as we often refer to it in polite conversation, which outlines how we're going to make the next really big improvement to recycling levels across Hampshire as a whole. Which Mr. Williams will take us through. And in order to get the level of commitment towards the very substantial sums of investment that's involved, um, in order to build new infrastructure so that we can cope with very large volumes of new types of waste and increase our recycling rates further, what the partnership has asked for is that every, uh, district and the county, um, endorses the GIMWAMs. The version we've seen is slightly different from the one that the county signed off because we insisted that carbon reduction be added as an objective to it, which has been done, uh, which the county has, I would admit, now adopted. Um, but, uh, the reason why this is going to cabinet is so that we, along with all the other authorities, have effectively made a commitment to the approach that we're prepared to take because we need to move forward in a coordinated way, um, in order to get the recycling improvements we need in response to the changing government context. And I think the details of that, I'll now hand over to Count, Mr. Williams to say a few words.
Um, Mr. Williams, I know in the pack we, we actually have a presentation. Are you going to put that up for us and take us through that?
Yes, I'm just going up now. So we, 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 should be, should be there now for all to see.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm going to talk for about 10 minutes, hopefully, um, just on some of the details with Councilor Todd, uh, as I've mentioned. And what I'm going to do is talk through the current position which we find ourselves in, some of the national changes which are coming, uh, what's going to happen locally, what the impact is likely to be on Winchester, and what the next steps are. Um, and I think the thing to really take note of right at the start of this is that this is likely to be the biggest, most significant change in waste and recycling we've ever seen, pretty much, um, which is, which is really, really interesting. How it pans out, what the timing is, what the costs are, where the money goes, still needs to be decided. But I think this is an early stage of having that discussion with members about where we go and what we do. Um, so as, as Councilor Todd said, um, we currently have a system in Hampshire where we in Winchester run our collections and we do the system that you will know in Winchester, glass, recycling, residual waste, all sorts of things. And all the authorities in Hampshire have more or less that system, but they're not the same. Um, I think of the 13 authorities that collect waste, none of them have the same system, the same colour bins, the same size bins. It's so it's very difficult to communicate to residents and tell them what to do. Though the recycling rate isn't very good. So that's, that's something which we, which we want to do. So we're, we're doing quite a lot and we've done quite a lot. However, it's a little graph of all the county level waste disposal authorities, there's 26 of them. Um, and Hampshire is in the bottom right-hand corner with the, uh, one of the worst kilograms of waste per household per year and one of the worst recycling rates. Um, and you'll see somewhere like Watertown is towards the top. And this is the sort of thing that the government is looking at and wanting to improve upon. So everyone does things consistently. Um, that sort of graph is repeated if you look across Hampshire, at the 11 local authorities in Hampshire that collect waste in Hampshire. Um, again, you can see that, you know, Winchester, with the latest data, is looking quite good on those figures. Our recycling rate has gone up from 38% in 1920 to over 40% in, um, 2021. Um, and we're now at over 40% for the first time and we're actually producing less waste per household than any of the other authorities in Hampshire, which is great, but it means that there are some authorities not doing as well as us. And what the government wants to do is drive this rate up consistently across the whole of England, um, so it really improves the rate going forward. So the government is, has proposed through the Environment Bill, which is now made through legislation, that there are three main planks of change coming. Um, one looking at consistency of household and business recycling collections, one looking at extending producer responsibility for packaging, and one looking at introducing a deposit return scheme. Um, and the government did a first consultation on all of these, uh, in 1920, to a second consultation on the results of those in the summer of 2021, which concluded in June. Um, and we're now awaiting the results of that consultation. I think there were 4,000 responses overall to those. There was 2,000 on the deposit return scheme, 1,000 on producer responsibility, and just under 1,000 on household and business recycling consistency. So they're now plodding through the results of that and making some decisions about some of the issues which it has raised. So I'm just going to give a big summary of each of these three big planks of change which are coming. And there is a lot of data on this on the internet. The consultations add a lot of financial data backing this up. Um, and you can read a lot more about that or ask me out of the meeting and I'll, I'll take you through it quite happily. Um, in terms of household and business recycling collections, the intention is to make it more consistent so that there are a similar set of recycling systems using a similar set of recycling and being collected in a similar sort of way with similar labelling. Um, and the intention is that that's the same for businesses as well. Um, so not only if you're at home and you have a recycling bin, would you put the same materials in it, but if you go to work, um, and there's a recycling bin there, that would have the same material. That, that's a really significant change in how things happen at the moment. Um, the second one is about extending producer responsibility for packaging. So the intention with this is that, um, people who produce packaging are made 100% responsible for the cost of disposing of that packaging. So if it is recycled, they cover the cost of that. If it goes to landfill or regeneration, they cover the cost of that. If it ends up as fly tipping, they cover the cost of that. Um, and so that is a significant amount of money, um, which is currently borne by local authorities at the moment, by and large, um, where the intention is that this incentivizes producers to question whether the packaging they need at all is necessary, um, and could they reduce it or not use it at all. And again, as you can see, that's, that's going to have some significant changes. Um, and there are lots of questions in the consultation, which the government is now reviewing, about how that is managed, how the money flows around the system, where it goes, who takes responsibility, who takes the lead, what sort of organisation runs this. So, um, that, that again is a very significant change. The third one is about a deposit return scheme. So this is essentially, I'm obviously not old enough um, to remember when this was in in the first place. Um, and I don't think my looks have got any of you work either. Um, but, um, and, and, you know, this is, this is similar to the old lemonade bottle scheme. Um, this is similar to the old lemonade bottle scheme, but the intention is that it would include all plastic bottles, glass bottles, steel cans, aluminium cans, essentially anything you have a drink in. Um, and the questions in the consultation were around, does that apply to all bottles? Or is it just ones you might get as you're out of the house? If you buy a load of bottles from the supermarket, take them home, should that be in the scheme? Or should it just be if you go to the shop and buy a bottle and take it away, should that be in the scheme? Um, so, uh, there's a deposit management organisation which has, is intended to be set up. Um, but it's looking like that will be around 20p, um, for each bottle, can or container. Um, if you are really interested in this, and it seems quite exciting, I can see it quite interesting. Um, the Scottish government have set this up and there's a website they're looking to launch in August, uh, next year. Um, so that, that has a lot of impact on what might happen in Hampshire. Um, and as Councilor Todd mentioned, um, the way waste is managed in Hampshire through disposal selection authorities with a partnership called Project Integra. Um, and, you know, we're, we're looking at how we respond to that picture and how we change what we're doing at the moment to take account of that. Um, this is a, this is a picture of a bit of land, um, just in Eastleigh, uh, where the county council is now starting the planning process to develop a single material recycling facility. Um, and the purpose of that is really to, at the moment, our material goes to two plants, one in Orson, one in Portsmouth. And this new one would take a wider range of materials, um, it would include glass pots, tubs, trays, cans, plastic bottles. Um, and it would be able to handle all that together. And those, those changes and those big infrastructure shifts um, will potentially lead to, and will need to lead to, changes in the partnership arrangements across all the Hampshire authorities, changes to the financial incentives amongst partners. Um, all aimed at increasing recycling and reducing, uh, residual waste. So some significant changes coming. In, in Winchester, um, as with other authorities, um, if, if we go down this route, um, what it probably means, and this is very much led by the government's National Direction of Travel, is introducing a weekly food waste collection and shifting how some of the other things we collect at the moment are shifted. So potentially stopping glass collection, but moving the glass into the recycling bin, potentially moving the paper and card out of the recycling bin into a new container. Um, and continuing on residual and garden waste and factory and wee and other things, but very much starting to do consistent communications along with other authorities. Um, and there will also be other impacts on businesses in Winchester. As I mentioned, consistency legislation will impact on businesses as will the deposit return scheme. So there's likely to be, however, um, a significant amount of income coming in, either from new burdens funding, from the enhanced producer responsibility, or from how financial management incentives might change between us and the other authorities. So at the moment, for example, if our residual waste volumes go down, we don't get a reward from the county council who save money because it costs them less money. Potentially in the future that might happen. Potentially there might be penalties if we don't improve. So some potentially significant income and some potentially significant costs. The other, the other thing to note is that if we are doing this, it's likely to be on the basis of how we're performing against other authorities of the same type nationally. Um, so whilst we might be doing well in Hampshire, um, we're not directly comparable to Gosport, for example, or to Rushmore. Um, we might be better off comparing ourselves with Chippchester or Tunbridge Wells or somewhere like that. Um, and this is, I think, where the government is going, is breaking down authorities into particular groupings and measuring you against those and seeing how you're doing, and potentially the payments linked to how you're doing compared to other similar types of authorities. But again, all that is dependent on the consultation responses, which are due out in the spring, whenever that starts and whenever that ends, or due out at some point. Um, so, uh, not yet confirmed when those are coming out. The indications are, uh, that the funding and the systems will start from around 23, 24, no, 22. Um, so that's not very far away. Um, but not everyone will move at the same time. We have a waste management contract in Winchester which we've just signed. There might be some room to flex that. Others might not have the same capability to flex it. Um, but this will need a significant change and a significant preparation. Um, we, we are, the purpose of doing this is to engage with members ahead of a cabinet decision next week. Um, with, we're supporting Councilor's Direction of Travel in Investment in terms of its infrastructure, which all the other authorities across Hampshire are doing as well. Um, and, uh, that will then start to develop what the Hampshire financial model is. Um, and when we understand the outcomes of the second stage consultation, we'll have a good idea of what we need to do next and when we need to do it. And we can then communicate that to residents and businesses across Winchester. All of that, of course, is going to need a significant amount of funding in terms of resources and time, and time to make decisions and time to do communications. And the indications from what the government has said so far is that almost all of that is funded because they have said that things like project management and communications and setup and capital costs are included. And that's likely to begin earnest once we get the outcomes of the national governance, which is likely to be the early half of twenty twenty two. So this is a confusing graph, especially if you're sat a long way from it. But what it's trying to do, if you look at it closer, is set out some of the really complex things which you're going to have to do. As I said right back at the start, this is a significant change. If you look on the far right hand side, it's looking at twenty twenty five, a sixty five percent recycling rate. We're on about forty percent at the moment. I could see how with what we've got at the moment, we could get to about forty five if we work really hard. Sixty five percent is a long way away, there's some big changes needed. And that timetable is difficult because we're already in twenty twenty two and there's a lot to do. And this is going to happen across England. I think if you are interested in this, Scotland and Wales have done quite a bit of this already. Wales have done quite a lot of this and are approaching that sixty five percent rate. So there's a lot of work to do. But actually, it's a really interesting time to be involved in this. It'll be really interesting in getting your views on this at an early stage so we can speak this into the cabinet next week.
Thank you very much, Mr Williams. Thank you for the presentation and the paper. I know just how much material there was to try and distill into a short number of slides. Obviously, I know members are going to have quite a few questions on this. But just for clarity at the moment, we're really looking at the strategic direction. So our question should not be getting into the money detail of what science bins and where are they going to go and that type of thing. We're being asked to pick up strategic direction that the council is proposing to take in partnership with Hampshire and the other local authorities. And so if our questions can focus on, is this the right strategic direction, is there a level of support? That would be great. Also, during Mr Williams' presentation, there's quite a lot of feedback. I don't know whether you could hear it as we can.
Yeah, I think it might be to do with the laptops and the microphone system being a bit too close, maybe.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So just so members can make sure that they've got their mics switched off, just so we can try and minimise that. Who would like to go first? I'm going to look at councillor Pearson. And councillor Weston, this time was very quick. Would you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Chair. Just a question on the ability to achieve recycling rates. And clearly, we're seeing Hampshire way down at the moment nationally. We're seeing Winchester way up within the county. What prevents going forwards in this new scheme, which I see is not an option. I think it's only good to go forwards with this, we need to set parameters and make it work. What prevents us levelling down in terms of the recycling rates that we actually achieve out of this scheme? Bearing in mind, we've got a lot of authorities around us that are lower than us. What's stopping us being dragged down, how do we ensure we achieve those targets? I don't think there's a risk of being dragged down. Nobody can stop us collecting what we're already collecting and recycling what we're already recycling. I think there is a risk that we are slowed down. And I suppose my concern, you know, so it is going to be an extraordinarily complicated project. So to take a simple example, we are not the only people who use the Otterform transfer station. So it is possible to do some parallel running. So the transfer station is where the bin lorries go when they're full up, basically, at the end of the day. It's also used by test alley. It is possible to do a bit of dual running with two systems, but in general, they'll all need to be changing over on a fairly comparable timing. So we need, for the long term change, we need test alley to change over as well on a very similar timing to us. And as you look around the district, most, I think, if not all of our transfer stations are shared with other authorities. So that will have an impact. It's not incementable, but it will have an impact. So I think the two things that, so we can't go backwards. There's nothing in this that will make us go backwards. And there are areas where we can obviously go forwards fairly unilaterally. So whereas the move to the new recycling bin with glass and plastic pots, tubs and trays and tins, whereas that needs a new materials recycling facility and changes to the transfer stations, we can't go, that has to be in place. And we can't have a hokey-cokey strategy. We can't sort of start off in one direction and then come back because we're moving to something else later. So that is dependent on full integration of everybody together. The area that we can look at and are looking at on timing is food waste because other authorities in Hampshire are already doing. And other authorities in Hampshire are already looking for ways to introduce it. So that's different because it doesn't change what's in the recycling bin. That's about an extra bin, an extra round of collections, and making sure that the disposal infrastructure is in place. Both the recycling infrastructure, so that Hampshire contracts to them or we do, and also the transfer infrastructure. But Hampshire is already putting transfer infrastructure in food waste in some places. And it's in place in Portsmouth as well. I don't know, Mr Williams has anything to add to that?
The only thing I'd add is whilst we've got a certain recycling rate, there are authorities in the country who've had got to sixty percent, sixty five percent. And they've largely done that through probably three main things. One is food waste recycling. The second one is recycling of pots, tubs, trays and carbons. The third one is really going hard on communications and engaging with their communities to make sure they put the right things in the right bins and don't produce much waste in the first place. And that's mirroring what the government's national strategy is suggesting. That's what we need to do. But those aren't easy steps to do and there's a lot of work to be done on that. But that's what other authorities have done to get to that level. So it is possible. And I think we should be looking to be dragged up by then rather than slowed down by others, I think.
And even though our results are good compared to other authorities in Hampshire, that doesn't mean we can't learn from other authorities in Hampshire. So for example, Batingstoke has a lot more flats than we do. I mean, a lot more flats than we do. And they have done a lot of work to learn how to help people flats recycle more effectively. And that's certainly something that I am keen for us to learn from and reapply those things that we can reapply ahead of moving to the sort of next generation disposal infrastructure. So certainly, the intention and the mindset within the recycling team is that we will do what we can to keep moving ahead. And, you know, particularly the core part that relates to pots, tubs and trays is a very big and complicated project. So, you know, we will be moving with everybody else as part of that.
Councillor Todd, while you were sort of talking on what we can do in the interim, I wondered if you could try to address Mrs White's questions when she was asking whether there was more we could do with supermarkets perhaps to encourage them to do more, to have more bins of plastic? Whether there were more useful recycling bins that we could put in? I feel this might be inappropriate, trying to address some of those questions.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good point. We will be quite, I think, focused on the things that we think will have the biggest impact on our recycling rates. So for example, we could change bin colours, but putting in a new bin costs about thirty quid. There's fifty five thousand households, that's one and a half million pounds per colour. Okay, so probably not because we could spend one and a half million pounds to improve recycling in lots of other ways. So I think there will be something, I mean, the government might mandate it, which people have to do it anyway. But we need to be quite hard headed about what we spend our money on. I'm very interested if we can find partners that enable us to do what we've done with cartons, with other materials, and be confident that they are going to be properly recycled. So I'm very happy to ask the question about that. But I've mentioned earlier a hokey-cokey strategy. What we don't want to do is put a lot of effort into putting in a piece of infrastructure and then twelve months later, we take it out again. Because actually, it's possible then that the carbon and the cost impact is such that we won't have made enough of a difference for it to be worthwhile. But certainly, we do try and work. We're always happy to help and support community groups. I certainly am in terms of encouraging recycling. We will look at if there are, we have looked for and will continue to look for if there are ways of supplementing it. We will talk to the supermarkets, I'm happy to do that. Although previous conversations with the supermarkets have normally led to the fact that they have defined national contracts, negotiated in their head office somewhere else. And so the local management have very, very little involvement in terms of what the recycling offer is. But, you know, we can certainly ask the question and see what's possible. So very happy to look at those as options. But the one thing I would stress, though, this is going to be a very complicated project. And we will need, the resource we have, to focus on the sort of big logistics, you know, buying trucks, buying bins, designing rounds, managing the changeover, getting the communications in place. And that will always be first in terms of managing the work plan and our priorities. I think, yeah, I'm getting the nod.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Mr Williams, can I just ask you a question? In terms of being able to reach these targets that the government has set of the sixty percent recycling rate, to what extent was there any acknowledgement in the work that was done that that would depend on also the producers reducing, simply reducing the amount of plastic that's produced in the first place that we end up taking home with the goods and services that we dump?
Yeah, I think that's an understood part of the solution is that we not only recycle more, but that we produce less in the first place and that the producers take a lead on supporting us to do that. And I think, you know, over the past few years, there have been some really noticeable changes in terms of changing contents to patches in supermarkets, in terms of lightweighting materials. So a bottle now weighs less than it did five years ago. And those are the sorts of things which are supporting this. But the intention with the extended producer responsibility regulations is that there is a real financial penalty to producers if they produce something which is easy to recycle. And that's a core part of this, is the government recognising that that needs to take part alongside households and businesses doing things differently.
Councillor Todd, can you be brief?
No, it's just a very quick point. And one of the uncertainties in managing all of this is that extended producer responsibility. I was working at a packaged goose company in Germany in the nineteen nineties when they introduced extended producer responsibility. And what it means is that if you've got something that's cheap and easy to recycle, you pay, let's say, a cent with every package that you produce. If you produce a complex lamella, you might be paying fifteen cents into the recycling system. And so the effect is that it also changes what the packaging is. And similarly, the deposit return scheme potentially has the effect that some of the things that are an important part of our recycling model, like glass bottles, suddenly dramatically fall away in terms of their proportion of what's in the waste. So it is quite a complex situation that we're moving into. You know, they wouldn't be doing a deposit return scheme or extended producer responsibility if they didn't think it was going to change the balance of what was coming forward for recycling and also reduce some of the waste that we're currently used to handling.
Thank you, councillor Todd, and thank you, Mr Williams. And councillor Ferguson, who do we have next?
We have councillor Karen, followed by councillor Cook. I've got a question.
So we can take them in that order, councillor Cook first?
Thank you, Chair. My question's for councillor Todd. Obviously, you've been in the privileged position, but it may be a lot of complexities to work out having been involved from a county perspective as well as a city perspective. Obviously, with this decision obviously going forward to cabinet and that responsibility falling on that, are you kind of confident with the proposal in front of us? I'm conscious that obviously that the kind of wording is that they want it to have like a unilateral, a universal approval from everybody and everyone's buying on this to make this work. Just from your perspective and the hard work that you've put in that, are you confident that this kind of proposal is really going to benefit Winchester in the long run as well?
Yes, no, I am absolutely confident. I mean, I would say that the county officers and city officers, like Mr Williams, but also the county officers have worked incredibly hard to assess the cost, the recycling impact of all the different options. And this is the model that we think is right for the kind of districts we have, for the area we have, which is variable in the sense of you have very rural areas and you have very urban areas. But this is the balance that generally, I think, that most of the authorities, I think of all of the authorities, feel is the right way forward. The impact for us is smaller than others because other people, you know, quite a few authorities don't have all the primary collections, other authorities don't have glass collections. So there's quite a lot of authorities that aren't as far ahead as we are in terms of their recycling. We'll have a bigger impact for them. But I think we're confident that reflecting the need for the whole county to move forward together, this is the right scheme for us and we would have said so. The one comment, the main comment we had on the content was that they needed to be more explicit about the need to reflect carbon in their decision making and be thinking that through in terms of how things work. I mean, I can't speak for how Mr Williams is behind doors, negotiations, but certainly the discussions with other portfolio holders across Hampshire, I'm happy with where we've come out.
Councillor. Thank you, Chair. I would like to first make this very bold statement. I am behind this paper one hundred and ten percent. I would like to follow on with some questions. I'll try and keep this so very, very short and sweet. We mentioned about a four thousand consultation, the results that have come back. And they're still delving through it, the government, I believe. Can we find out when we're going to see the results of that? That would be good to find out. And secondly, I'd like to draw everybody's attention to the picture that we were shown earlier today on the screen, which is the map. I just really wanted to clarify this. I believe this is going to, is this going to planning in Eastleigh next month? That's one of my questions, the facility. Now, is this a transfer station that you're referring to in Chicken Hall Lane in Eastleigh, where I understand it to be? Or is it where members of the general public can go and recycle their rubbish? Because following on from that, I think some people in this room might know where I'm going with this. I'm concerned, as many people will be in Eastleigh Borough Council and their residents and surrounding villages, what effect the traffic will have going through into that area. So I just want to make sure I've got my facts right there. So I've got to fit, that was my question. And really to follow on from the Madam Chair, councillor Ferguson, is to highlight the facts of what Mrs White has brought to the table today, that we don't have enough in our supermarkets where we recycle. And it is constantly full. Badger Farm in particular, and I will say it, Sainsbury's, bless them. I'm constantly emailing them and I'm often in there asking them to empty their recycling boxes because their bins are always full. And that's me done, thank you.
Yes, Mr Williams, I think you're going to address those.
Yes, I think you mentioned it would be good if we could know when the results were coming out from these consultations. I agree with you. We don't know when they're coming out at the moment. Every time I sort of see the county, who are more linked in with some of the national organisations, they say they're still looking through them. And it's sometime in the spring, it's still a very deadline. So that's what we're looking for, but we don't know. The map I showed you in Eastleigh is where the county council is looking at putting a material recycling facility. So it currently has two, one in Alton, one in Portsmouth, where all the material goes. They're not accessible to the public, they're not transfer stations. The recycling goes there, it gets sorted out. And the material is then taken out in lorry loads of aluminium cans or paper or card. So they're looking at replacing two smaller facilities with one. So they're looking at replacing two smaller facilities with one larger facility uh which can cope with all the housing demand which is likely to come from Hampshire in the next ten or fifteen years. And is also large enough or small enough to cope with the changes in material that will come through uh what they're proposing in the in the in the new in the new systems. So that that will, that's the county council as a minerals and waste planning authority is 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 looking at that. But clearly there are issues of traffic, um which they'll have to take into account on that. That site already has, my understanding, um planning commission for um uh minerals and waste usage. Um so they will have to take those sorts of things into account, and that's one of the reasons they're starting that process now to to do that. Um I think, yeah, I mean, you you mentioned supermarkets, um I think, you know, they're they are going to be affected significantly, I suspect, by um this legislation coming forward. And we'll have to respond, um and I think, yeah, as as a supplier of a lot of food and drinks, bottles and cans, you know, it's potentially a lot of space will be taken up by reverse spending in supermarkets, for example. Um so they they will be looking at the results of the government consultation with interest um because potentially it will cost them as suppliers, as producers, um and as businesses. Um and so they'll be looking at that very closely, I suspect.
Um may I ask a supplementary or not, Chair?
Um if it's incredibly brief, Councillor.
Incredibly brief, so back to the picture, if I may, of the building that's proposed. Will we, and we all know we have a duty to cooperate with any other council, will we get the opportunity as councillors, when that does go to planning, to be able to speak? Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I think it's because it's a minerals and waste planning issue, it would go to Hampshire. So I think as long as along with any other organisation, public or authority, I think there would be an opportunity to respond as a as a planner, at the planning standpoint, my understanding.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, um Mr. Williams. And councillor Talamet is just going to move on, if I may, um uh who's the next?
Me.
Oh.
Possibly, I've got councillor Tocqueville.
And councillor Westwood to follow, I think. Um okay, so I'll keep this brief, um like councillor Cook, I support the strategic direction, it all makes a lot of sense. Um but I want to come back to the comments that um Mrs. White raised earlier about what happened in the meantime. We've got a very enthusiastic community in My Ward, in the Worries, um for my sins. Uh they've had a video of me stomping down on cans to kind of crush them down to a small, smaller size as possible on their on their site. But there's many other things that that community is really keen to do. And I guess what I'm trying to think about is what can we do short term, thank you councillor Cook, you're reading my mind, um to to, if you like, offer the encouragement, to sh- to really demonstrate that we care and that we're trying to figure out how to bridge the gap. And that might be around uh setting up a communication network or inviting these kinds of groups to be in a communication network or something like that that enables us to point them to where to take stuff. Um and obviously that communication network could then feed into evidence to uh put pressure on, say, the supermarkets to be a bit more frequent in how they manage things. I don't know what it is, but once the communication network is set up, maybe the the ideas could come from that group. And maybe a lot of it you'd have to say, sorry, we just can't do in the short term. But if they get one or two things through, it keeps the encouragement to keep going and and keep uh keep looking at those incremental opportunities. So that's my question, is what can we do in that respect? Sorry, a long question, hopefully it's a shorter answer.
Um thank you, councillor Crumson, um ju- just just before your answer, I mean, we we obviously have the um community engagement team um as well. I I know your resources are stretched, but I wonder if there could be some crosswork that done done in this area. But Mr. Williams, I see you were keen to try and respond.
Yes, um I think I think that's a really helpful thoughts you've given, I promise, uh councillor. Um I think that we are to some degree waiting a little bit on the the government's direction of travel because it may well be, and I would anticipate in this, um they sort of set how some of the timetables might change. So it might be that there is funding to do some stuff early or to trial some stuff. Um it might be food waste, for example, and we might want to go earlier on that, and there might be funding for that. Um what we what we don't really want to do is start doing something which isn't what is going to happen in the long term. Um but there there might be things, and I think this is where, you know, engagement with the community would be really useful. There might be things that they know about, we don't know about, we'll do. Um I think the other thing where engagement with the community will be really, really helpful is that uh whilst we don't know yet what the outcome of the government consultation is going to be, we're going to have to do something pretty significant. Um and we could either, I could make that for my own, or we could go out to the community and say, how do you want to do this? And how should we work with you to get a better solution which fits everybody? And potentially, because the change is going to be so significant, it is going to be worth talking to the community about how we do this in Winchester and how we apply it for Winchester, so we do it better and faster and smoother than others.
Um thank you, Mr. Williams, for a very positive uh response. Councillor Todd?
Um yeah, I mean, certainly, for example, the 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 idea for a car that we've now gotten when six sites around the 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 district came from the community. Um and and I think I like the ideas that uh Mr. Williams put forward. I think when we're coming to really big change and if we're looking at education and other such things, we know that we've got recycling champions in the community who can support that, then that's potentially a real asset and can help us move ahead. Um and 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 also, I think, the other advantage of putting networks together is I suspect people can learn from each other. I mean, you know, if you've never seen the Denme Scouts Recycling Centre, it's absolutely amazing. Um and I'm sure if they were to talk with, um you know, what's going on with the Worries, what I know the people, and also for the pushing out, then undoubtedly, you know, one plus one plus one would equal five, uh and there will be real synergy, so. Um uh we'll we'll have a conversation about how we can do that efficiently. It might be as simple as just setting up an email list that people can sign up to, but we'll 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 see what we can do to get that going, but I'm certainly very happy to have conversations with people about that kind of work.
Um thank you, councillor Todd, I think that would be very worthwhile. Um councillor Tocqueville.
Um Chair, yeah, thank you, Mrs. White is absolutely right about this issue, household waste is so important to a lot of people, and actually this paper does seem absolutely the right way forward, it's really positive, I think you could receive nothing but sort of endorsement for the strategy so far this evening. Um I moved here in July two thousand and nineteen, and and in just two years, we've seen Winchester uh have a massive increase in recycling, introduced gas recycling, introduced battery recycling, small electric recycling. So it is a big credit to the theme over the last two years for those achievements, and it's clear that Winchester is going to be leading the way um in this new strategy. Um this question, the question I have relates to litter, which, uh you know, um Mr. Williams knows that I'm a uh a lit- anti-litter zealot, um and I was just on that point um around extended um producer responsibility. Do we think there will be funding from that which will allow us to tackle the um the litter problem in Winchester District? Um looking, for example, at models like Litter Free Dorset, who have a um as a partnership scheme that should coordinate volunteer litter groups, um but it needs a bit, it needs funding, it needs resource. So a question is, is whether it that's also included in a potential financial package we could get from from that.
Um yes, Mr. Williams.
Uh yes, is the answer, and the the intention of the extended producer responsibility regulations is that the producers are responsible for a hundred percent of the cost, um which includes, according to the consultation, um that which would end up as litter and the cost of carrying that, all sorts of things. And so there's a there's a lot of data actually in there, I'm happy to talk to you about it afterwards because there's there's quite a lot, quite a big section on that, if you are, if you are that interested. Um and I can talk it through with you and explain to you, but that that is certainly the intention from the from the government is that there is some financial incentive coming to local authorities to to cover across the world.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, and it sounds like councillor Tocqueville, you are going to get your dream come true to talk about litter in de- in detail. Uh councillor Westwood, I think you're the next.
Thank you, Chair, yes, um and a subject dear to my heart as well, so congratulations on getting primary emergency and the need for reduction in carbon emissions added to the strategy statement. But it's the only mention in the entire paper of the word carbon. So I just wondered whether you could elaborate a little on um how this project will uh reduce carbon and whether there is any scope in this project or activities in this project to generate energy um associated with the uh the disposal side um and to contribute to our reduction in carbon footprint, thank you.
Um, well, first of all, there are some very detailed spreadsheets sitting in the background that evaluated the carbon impacts of various choices that we might make in terms of how things work. Um obviously, there's this issue in Hampshire in terms of carbon, is that whatever gets left goes in an incinerator, which is generally not great for carbon, um and for CO2. Um and if we increase our recycling rates, it should help with that. Um it also ties into questions uh of of how the operation is run, and so we want to make sure that questions, for example, if the options of low or no carbon freighters to carry the waste is taken into account as well. Um food waste, um the county isn't looking at planning it, um the market seems to have, their their view on conversations with them is that the market is providing enough capacity to handle um food waste recycling, and that is something where I think the composting process does lead to an effective reduction um in carbon impact. Um but just the fact that you're, you know, not recreating glass and other such things does have a major carbon impact, it's lower carbon, I believe, to reuse glass and to create that. I don't know, Mr. Williams, has any further expected, he does?
Yeah, I think, um again, similar, there there is a huge amount of data which the government produced um as part of the consultation, setting out the cost and benefits financially, but also in terms of carbon, on all the options they were presented. Um so, um again, I'd be really happy to talk you through where that is, so you can have a look at it and and show you the 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 numbers they've got, because I think what they're intended to do is end up with a situation where as a country, it is cheaper, but saves carbon. And and that's what they're trying to balance now, is work out what is the best solution in terms of financial and carbon saving, and they seem to be the two things which are driving their decision-making process at the moment. Um so I'd be more than happy to get, talk to you with that and send some information through to you, where the links are with that data, potentially.
Um thank you, um Mr. Williams, I I actually have a question. Um there was mention made of the financial risks to the council, and and I wondered if you could talk a little bit more about what you perceive those could be. And I know the council is moving towards the twin sword, but there may be other other um authorities that choose a different sort, the street, street sword. And I just wondered whether there are any financial risks to us by getting behind the strategy, if then the government suggests that a different strategy is needed?
Uh yes, I think because there's such a significant change in how the finances are going to move around the system, um there are going to be risks that we might not make as much of that as we could do if we go down particular approaches. Um but there might be areas where we uh generate less income. So for example, at the moment, um we generate, we we get income from the sale of plastic bottles. Um so if you recycle a plastic bottle in Winchester, um we get some of the income from that. Um if you have a plastic bottle in five years' time, you might take that back to Tesco and we don't see it, we don't get any of that income. So there are a number of places where our income could go down. Equally, there's a number of places where our income could go up. Um and I think what we're going to have to do is look through the items of what the government says um and with Hampshire and the other authorities across Hampshire, identify what the risks are um and look at how we work together to reduce the overall cost to waste management in Hampshire so that we can make most of the opportunities and minimise the risks that we have.
Thank, thank you, just to follow up to that, um when you were showing the graph, um our position currently in terms of recycling, you suggested that if we were measured against other similar local authorities, if our recycling rates were as good or they were below average, that there could also be financial, um that you'd be penalised in some way financially. And and do you have any sense so far on what extent that 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 could be, what the impact of that could be?
Um I think, uh what is, I think what is likely to happen potentially is, yeah, you you might get some more funding from the extended producer responsibility scheme, um if you are recycling more materials. Um and therefore, if you do, you get less money. Um so there could, there could, there could well be a risk there, which we we will have to be aware of. Um so there's there's, there's a lot of those, in terms of the scale of that, um I mean, I think it could quite potentially be a very significant amount of money coming to the city council um compared to what we get at the moment. Um and it's, you know, it the the figure I had on the slide, which was over two million pounds, you know, in year one, for extended producer responsibility. Um you know, we're talking significant sums of money which are going to change in the system. Um how how and where that goes exactly at the moment, we we await to see what what the government says. And then we've got to respond to that and see how we can make the most of that.
Um can councillor Todd, I can see you'd you'd like to say something, um I'm going to sort of push this onto the bed because it's now five to nine, but is it quick?
Yeah, it's very quick, I mean, moving, so the the first thing to say is, what was done was a financial comparison of the different methods of collection, which is the main thing that's facing us in terms of the choice. And certainly, um the figures were pretty close between the different options, but we are, you know, given the choices of ways to fulfil the government obligation, this is the one that makes sense for the county as a whole and is fine for us in terms of how it works financially, so there's no particular risk there. There will be a risk in you, there there will be costs, we will be buying new containers, and we will be having to dispose of new materials and to manage food waste, which is effectively an extra round, we will need new vehicles. Now, we are looking at how we can use the ones we have more efficiently and, um you know, those kind of questions are up. But but in general, there will be more trucks, more people being paid, more containers, so it is going to cost more. And so the financial arrangements in terms of what we get back from government will be really important in terms of, you know, what, how how much of the extended producer responsibility finds its way to Winchester. So those are the questions that we need to be looking at and thinking about in terms of how everything works.
Um thank you, councillor Todd. Um do we have one last question before we go into debate? Debate, okay, so if we can move into debate, and I believe councillor Pieson, you're ready to go? Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to congratulate councillor Todd on Project Inter and to Mr. Williams uh putting this this paper together. Um it really, you you all really need to uh read the GIMRANs documents as well, and you'll find out some next week's cabinet's papers, uh because the the two partnerships together. Uh there are an awful lot of questions we can't answer at this stage. Uh I guess I I should declare basic interest that I I was on the Project Inter board, councillor Todd, for four, five years uh early on when there was a lot of changes taking, beginning to take place. Um but I haven't been on that board for quite some time now. Now, there are a number of things people have been saying about, uh how do we improve the the rates? Now, to move up, was I think about two percent improvement over the last couple of years, is a big increase. We've all got to bear in mind that forty percent means forty percent of the total waste collected. So if you want to improve the improve this figure, so we've got to re- um to communicate to our residents, because it's a partnership that starts residents, right away through the whole system. To communicate to about what we call talking about contamination, which is where the wrong thing goes in the wrong bin. And um uh yeah, the word called contrast, which is if you have contamination going into the bin, the whole load that's collected by the freighter has got to be thrown out. And that mean, that impacts on the figures. So that's where we've got to start, communication, we can start doing that this year. That doesn't need any further development. Um one of the issues we have with Project Inter is what we call an ethical waste disposal. There's so many authorities nationally have been exporting their waste, which is a major known which is a major non-norm today. Increasing number of countries that used to accept our waste have said, no, we don't want it. And I think that is an important consideration. I've emphasised that Hampshire has not exported any of their waste. The food waste collection has got separate issue its own, as Councillor Todd and Mr Williams knows. It depends on anaerobic digesters. At present, as far as I know, the closest anaerobic digester we have is Down End Dorset. You've got a mileage issue, which comes back down to the freighters. They almost just introduced, they changed their engines in their freighters to, so they, I'm not sure whether they changed their engine or changed their carburetors to whatever, if they have carburetors these days, where it's 100% biofuels in these freighters, which is a big carbon reduction. And that is one of the main reasons. The next issue I've made a note on is supermarkets versus independents. One of the issues, Councillor Todd, quite rightly said, is trying to get the supermarkets to change their policy locally, and they can't or won't simply because they're dictated by national policies. So it's not a question of getting the supermarkets in Winchester to change. You've got to get the headquarters to change the policy so it can reflect on the local issues. And of course, that is separate issue for the independents, the smaller grocery shop, now local neighbourhood stores. Now, that is quite a different issue, particularly if we're going to have the extended producer responsibility. I find it quite a rye amusement when we're going back to collecting bottles and giving £20. I think it was, I think to recall the 1950s, 1960s, I think it was £2.50. It may well have been less than that, something like a penny or two penny in new money, not the old money. And we used to have curious thing, the scouts go around, collect the bottles, and then they take them into the collection, to the shops and get the money to fund the scouting. Or you get, you get people living in the streets doing the same thing to fund their life. And it's ironic returning the circle and say, oh, that's a good idea, isn't it new? No, it's not new. Nor is it new, we're talking about electric vehicles. My milk was delivered by an electric float. It wasn't a diesel-powered car, it was an electric float, it was electric. And this is back in the 1950s and 1960s. Why on earth would change that? I had no idea. I just, it's a vehicle revolution. That's the sort of thing we've got to think about. Finance is interesting, but the paper says, and the Jim Rams document also says, much is hoped will come from government, but also much from business. We know that basically the polluter pays. If businesses are producing material, it's a pollution, then they've got to pay for it, pay for the collection. That, I think, is what the Environment Act, 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 Mr Williams. I noticed Jim Rams also talked about the bill as well, so. The Environment Act became a policy in November last year. The collection control regime has got, the business control regime has got to add to this. If they expect the look for it, it's fast enough, you just can't do it. If we're talking about even an MRF, I don't know, £10, £15 million for an MRF? Ballpark. It's, we're talking about that sort of figure. Do you have anaerobic digesters? You've also got the fact, if you're taking food waste out of the residual bin, it's going to impact on the calories value of what goes into the ERF, the energy recycling facilities, which means they will have to be upgraded. And so the whole string amounts, we just don't know the answer to yet. And I think Councillor Todd and Mr Williams, we don't know, but we don't job, basically saying that calmly, quietly, and say, look, guys, don't run off, don't panic. My panic was food waste collection. What are we going to do with the food waste? And I'm going to digest the produce anything.
Councillor Pearson.
Yeah, okay. Well, I didn't ask any questions. Okay, I'll ship it over.
Councillor Pearson, thank you for all of those important points in debate. Who would like to go next? Councillor Westwood, can you beat that?
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so just a few points on areas I think we could strengthen this and those. I think the link to carbon reduction and how it contributes to carbon reduction for the district is very important. And can I just like to see something additional in there around that so that it's well understood as to what this will contribute? If you're raising recycling rates of 40 to 60, 65, 75, there is an impact on the carbon footprint of this district, and we'd like to know what it is. Let's see something a bit stronger around business. Business was talked about, that the business waste collection is different to domestic waste. Therefore, we need to be quite clear on how that is going to work, otherwise that becomes a weak point in projects that need to be strengthened. And a really key point for me is communication. You've got to take people's hearts and minds on this, people have got to know what's going on. And the communication element to that is really important. In terms of key risks for the project, then which is your question really to us? Clearly, the finance and the funding is a risk which we've already talked through. I think timeframe is a risk as well. There's an awful lot to do here, it's a very complicated project. We've got new facilities being built and we've got short timeframes. We look at when the government wants this implemented, so time is a real issue. Is it on top of that, whether it's actually achievable? I think there's a real potential for cut out a chaos if we're not careful, because there's a lot of authorities, a lot of moving parts. And we've already seen from experience, it's happened around, that changing the collection process is not as straightforward as it seems sometimes. So that's a real risk for us, and that will have an impact on the recycling rates that we actually achieve if we don't get it right. The, actually achieving those targets, I know, I know, we talked about that during the question hours, but we've got to be really clear on the way that we, as we just, as we made forward to this, on how those targets will be achieved. And beyond that, I think there's an element around how we change once it's implemented. We need to understand that before we walk into it, because you've already talked about changing behaviour, Martin, in the day, what Councillor Todd, sorry, in terms of the actual about packaging and big one, like glass and so on. So there will need to be the facility to change as we go forwards, and that needs to be clearly understood before we go into this, go forwards. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Westwood, some very good points. Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Chair. Real quick, two things, communication is really important. I think we need to be going back to our members of the residents and re-highlighting them and really informing them and educating them about what does go in your bin, okay? I know they've got stickers that are on the bin, but, you know, at the beginning of the year, send out a letter to all of them. I know there's a cost to that, but put something out on all the information services. So that's communication. And the second thing, I suppose, is, I think you call them, is it hot composters? What, as I say, it's not a question, it's a statement really, but, you know, there are other councils that have deals. I think probably the least expensive hot composter you can buy is about £185, something like that. Is that something that perhaps we could look at doing with our food in the meantime, before this wonderful new site is opened, built and opened?
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Cook. I have a hot compost bin, and it's much quicker than my old compost bin, but it has to be fed in the right way, she said. Do we have any more debate, Councillor Tippaker?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just to say that, I mean, this does look like a very exciting strategy. It's obviously a huge challenge, and it means clearly a lot of the focus of officers' time and it's senior leaders in the council's time is going to be spent on and putting together the infrastructure needed to support this change in the next 18 months or two years. And I think clearly there's going to be a little bit of patience needed to get to the point where we're going to get these exciting new service improvements. But it is positive to hear tonight that there's sort of, you know, everything will be done to look at the shorter term service improvements, which is why very helpfully introducing the debate and discussion on this really went about. And indeed, it's credit to the city council over the last two years that it's made constant improvements in recycling and waste services. I do agree with Councillors Cook, Westwood and Councillor Pearson. Communication is something we can, we can do better. We've done, we've done some there, I know, in the last couple of years, but it's something we can do now. And you can do it in simple ways, we can do it with online communications, we can do a simple letter communication, as Councillor Cook said. We can also do it by championing people like Laura Tarrant, who Miss White mentioned, and putting her as an exemplar of the sort of thing, sort of resident that we want to really encourage and support they're doing. Indeed, Laura is down at the food pantry tonight at the unit 12, she's an extremely, an extremely good citizen. So fantastic work, really exciting to see what's going to happen next. A credit to you both so far for the hard work done so far.
Thank you, Councillor Tippaker and Councillor Croreson. Did you want to add anything or Councillor Farn?
I think Councillor Cook and Councillor Tippaker have just stolen my thunderstone.
Thank you very much, everybody. So I'm going to close this debate. I just wanted to echo the keenest thanks to Mr Williams and the team and Councillor Todd for bringing this paper and this presentation to us this evening. The paper is very clear, the presentation is clear, and I know it takes a great deal of work to distill a lot of information to something that is digestible in a short period of time. So thank you for that. I think you can take from the committee in support of the strategy that you are pursuing. I think the committee has made it clear that we feel very strongly that work does need to be done and communication around this almost now, at the beginning, bringing people alongside. I take Councillor Westwood's point about, the report mentions the impact on businesses. We sometimes don't communicate as well with our businesses, and there will be, it will have a huge impact on those businesses as much as households, and we all need to get behind that. I think I agree again with Councillor Westwood that in the report, particularly as you come to conclusions, there isn't a mention of the assessment of the carbon impact. I would like to see that, because if only people read the beginning and read the end, which some people do, if it's not mentioned at the end, then we've quite missed what we've taken into consideration. I also, you said there was a risk that we could be slowed down in our efforts. I would like us to challenge you to, rather than the county slowing us down, for us to cheer the county up, to push them forward faster. And I know Councillor Todd enjoys that role. I'd also like to thank Mrs White that this has done. And I very much like the idea that we should use our network of recycling champions to help us make these changes and also to see what can be done in the meantime. But thank you very much for bringing this paper to us this evening. Do you have everything you need? Thank you. Right, I would like to suggest, committee, we've been going for two, three hundred and forty hours, if I've got my maths right. So can we have a quick five minute couple break? And then, Mr Ingram, thank you for waiting so patiently, you will have our full attention. So we will come back at 20:40.
We are chair.
Thank you. Um, so welcome back everybody and thank you for your patience. Um, we are now moving on to item ten on the agenda, which is our last um, paper this evening. Which um, by no means is last not least. Um, and we have, it's paper on air quality briefing update, so we've got both paper and a presentation. And we have Mr Ingram in the room, thank you for your patience David. And I'm hoping that councillor Williams is still online, but not sure who's introducing the paper this evening. Are you introducing it councillor Williams? Uh, councillor Williams, you're muted?
Yes. Sorry, sorry. I'm happy for Mr Ingram to um, do it as my voice is going.
Thank you councillor. Um, thank you for staying up even though you're feeling broom, um, Mr Ingram.
Thank you very much chair, good evening members, members of the public. Um, this is uh, an annual briefing that I'm required to uh, deliver to the Health and Environment Policy Committee. Um, usually it takes place in the late autumn, early, early winter, but it's obviously been rolled over into early twenty twenty two. Hence obviously the date still says December, December. There are a number of members in the room who are very familiar with uh, the air quality regime. Uh, councillor Pearson has been involved in air quality for, for many, many years. Um, and knows a lot about the subject, but I'm also conscious there's a couple of new members that might appreciate a little bit of a uh, counter through the, the background as to why we monitor for air quality. Uh, so very, very quickly, um, in two thousand and three, which the city council declared an air quality management area. Um, that was declared on the basis of a piece of legislation called the Environment Act nineteen ninety five, which required that all local authorities needed to undertake monitoring uh, of air quality within their jurisdictions, within their districts. And where they find or found poor air quality, they needed to identify the area of concern. And uh, by extension, they also required to um, set out an air quality action plan associated with the air quality management areas of concern. Um, we in Winchester have a single air quality management area, which is shown on the slide. And hopefully you can see it a bit clearer in your packs. But it is essentially the centre of the Winchester city area. Um, extending along the eight radials, the main arterial routes coming in and out of the city. Uh, and that area, as I say, was first declared back in two thousand and three and has remained as such up to the present day. And it's been um, fondly referred to as the squash bider by many of us that are actually dealing with air quality. So if you hear that phrase, you know what that means. Um, the, once the air quality action, uh, sorry, management area was declared in two thousand and three, we adopted our first plan back in two thousand and six. Uh, and we are currently working to the uh, the latest plan that was adopted by cabinet back in twenty seventeen. Originally, we were um, identified as requiring to monitor for particulates, PM tens. And also nitrogen dioxide within that particular area. Um, and as part of that monitoring programme, we have currently two static air quality monitoring stations. Um, one of those is um, currently in St George's Street. Uh, we did have one uh, just outside of the Cheshere Rectory until that was recently moved up to Romsey Road. So we now got a, a, well, an old monitoring um, uh, nitrogen dioxide monitor that has now been moved up to, to Romsey Road, which is an area that remains of some concern, which I'll come on to in a moment. Uh, but in addition to those two static stations, we also monitor um, air quality through a framework of nitrogen dioxide tubes, which are passive NOx tubes. Uh, we have twenty eight of those in the city and a further eight um, diffusion tubes around the district in various different locations. More recently in twenty twenty, we installed uh, quite an expensive piece of equipment called a five S two hundred that monitors for particulates uh, back in twenty thirteen. Uh, we actually undeclared, which is defragile and we certainly no longer need to monitor. We undeclared for particulates because we were consistently uh, complying with the national standards at forty micrograms per liter cubed per annum. Um, but uh, as I say, recently back in twenty twenty, we started to recommence the monitoring of particulates in particular in response to raising, rising concerns in PM two point five. To uh, PM two point five, which are the finer particulates, um, which there's a body of evidence that is growing that they uh, the finer particulates have got even worse public health um, impacts. They can get it to the um, cellular level of the body, they, they've been found in lung tissue, uh, muscle tissue and, and more greater concern in brain tissue. So um, we started monitoring for those a couple of years ago. Um, and the final point on the slide is it shows that there's been um, recent exceedances of nitrogen dioxide of the annual mean standard, which is currently set, the statutory standard is forty micrograms per liter cubed. Uh, and we've recently um, identified that Romsey Road remains an area of concern, go on to the next slide. Overall, there's been a uh, a, a positive trend uh, in nitrogen dioxide. Um, we've seen significant drops in nitrogen dioxide levels um, in all areas of the city and in the wider district in the last four or six years, uh, so between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty. Um, and also recent, more recently in twenty twenty one. Um, there was significant improvements in air quality in the air quality management area in twenty twenty. Uh, as it says, says on the slide due to Covid nineteen lockdowns, as you might imagine, there was a uh, a significant drop in um, traffic entering uh, and driving through the city during that particular year. Um, but obviously that's a bit of an aberration, that's not a year that we can therefore rely upon as part of our trending analysis. So we have to treat that particular year with, with some degree of caution. Um, even though across all our monitoring sites, we actually achieved statutory standards. So we, we, we've noted those results, but notwithstanding, we have to treat them with a caveat of caution. As that trending has been identified across many local authorities up and down the country. Um, obviously there's been a, a sudden sea change in the way that we've been working, for those of us that live in the blue collar employment sectors, we've been working from home. Um, and indeed, this is the first time I wore a tie in quite some time, I haven't worn it, so. Uh, I don't need to put it on. Um, so uh, clearly there's, there's been a positive impact on air quality. And then actually, one of the positive benefits of Covid is that it's, it's, it's had a huge benefit on air quality. But um, obviously during twenty twenty one, it was locked down, rules have changed, people have started to emerge. We've seen a, a, a corresponding trend in, in levels of nitrogen dioxide in the city going up again. Um, the NOx tubes within, uh, as I said earlier, um, by and large across the city have showed compliance with national standards, but there is uh, an area on Romsey Road stubbornly in exceedance of the national standards. Um, even though during twenty twenty, as I say, they were compliant in twenty twenty one, there was a, a, an exceedance of the forty microgram standard. And we've recently taken in the um, uh, sorry, so recently taken in the twenty twenty one data. And that trend unfortunately is such that it's been an exceedance of, of, of that level. Um, but there is still a high degree of confidence that outside of the Winchester city area, certainly outside of the air quality management area, across the eight sites that we're monitoring for nitrogen dioxide, all of those are well within compliant levels of the, the national standards, as they can't withstand. And the, the, I just thought I'd put a, a few of the sort of more notable actions that we had within our air quality action plan. The, the current one that was adopted in twenty seventeen, some of you will be familiar with these actions. So uh, we adopted differential parking tariffs to encourage people to park outside of the city while they're coming in. So it's obviously more expensive to come into the city centre. Um, we investigated the possibility of adopting a clean air zone, which is essentially, you may have heard that phraseology. Um, it's essentially basically charging people's drive into the city centre. Um, that was discounted because um, the, the, that cost of installing a, a CAS is very high. You have to um, automatic number plate recognition systems on the routes coming in and out of the city. Um, and it would, would have been disproportionately expensive for the benefits. Um, and also it's also worth noting that the uh, the Winchester fleet, when compared with the fleet across the, across the country, the, the, the um, average age of vehicle entry in Winchester's areas is newer than the national average. So in actual fact, the, the payback period of that clean air zone would have been a lot shorter than other areas. Um, it's also worth noting that it's only really the larger, significantly larger cities such as Birmingham that have actually successfully introduced a clean air zone. And more recently, right, Portsmouth had recently done that at the end of last year. Um, we've introduced a supplementary planning document that was passed by cabinet towards the end of, of, of last year. Uh, so that covers the whole of the city, so that's introduced new planning standards and requirements for new development within the city. Um, so uh, going forward, and you're not allowed to have solid fuel burning stoves in new development. Um, you are only required or only allowed to have um, fuel efficient boilers, uh, low emission boilers and a raft of other measures uh, as well, which I'll go into now. We've delivered thirty seven electric rechargeable points around the city. Um, in our car parking estate, which is already proving very popular. Um, I'll come on to the point raised by uh, Mr Tate uh, in regard to taxi community. Uh, and we have obviously adopted a, a sustainable procurement strategy. Um, and it's absolutely a point there, and we're allowed a taxi there, taxi community as well. So the next steps going forward are that we have, as all local authorities that have an air quality action plan, we have statutory duty to review our plan every five years. Our current plan was adopted in twenty seventeen, so that means that we have to review and update our plan this year in twenty twenty two. Um. But before we can do that, we need to, as I say, the twenty twenty data was a little questionable in its um, in its usability, if you like. Um, so we've, we've had to wait for a full year's data, a new full year's data. So um, we've also got a brand new set of data for twenty twenty one. We've literally pulled all that data in, it's currently going through data ratification. We have a third party data ratification consultancy that does that piece of work for us. Um, and that new dataset should become available um, circa um, April of this year. Um, and that will be essentially informing our direction going forward. Um, as part of that review and update of our air quality action plan, we need to uh, look at um, where we currently are with the data and how that will affect the air quality management area that we have, the current squash bider, as I, as I referred to earlier. Um, the indications are that much of the area um, that is currently covered um, is now compliant with, as I mentioned earlier, Romsey Road being stubbornly harmed. So um, our expectation is that we will be able to reduce the size of the air quality management area probably to a linear strip of road along Romsey Road, taking in the upper high street parts of St George's Street. However, we have uh, commissioned a consultant to do a piece of work for us, looking at that data. So we've got some independent ratification that that bears what we believe, from an officer point of view, will be the outcome of, of, of the review of the air quality, the air quality management area. We expect to have that study, in fact, Phil Tidrich, who is on the call, uh, we commissioned a piece, that piece of work um, at the end of last year. Um, the tenders that we've asked, the, well, that we, we've sent that uh, that commission out to various different specialist air quality consultants with a deadline date to provide um, their tender on the twenty seventh of January, so next week. We've already got several um, tenders in and at that date, we will be looking at the tenders with a view to um, awarding that work to one of the success, one of the successful uh, consultants to, as I say, review um, the air quality management area. Um, and uh, hopefully we'll have a report which we can bring back to cabinet later in, in the year, in the early summer, making recommendations as to what the air QMA size should be. But also, uh, we've asked the air quality consultants to make recommendations as to what actions will be required to ensure that we achieve full compliance with the um, annual mean standard for nitrogen dioxide along Romsey Road and the upper high street. So that's a piece of work that we will be getting back very shortly. In addition to that piece of work, and at the same time, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a two-stage commission that we've asked the air quality consultants to put a tender for. One is to review the air quality um, action plan. Um, two, five of that statutory stance to review and update our air quality management area. Um, but there's a second part to that tenure as well, which is to look at um, new standards going forward. Um, with a view to potentially adopting our own more stringent bespoke standards. Which brings me on to the next slide, which are what are the impending air quality standards for the future? So the Environment Act twenty twenty one, which has already been uh, mentioned in previous um, presentations. Uh, as Frank pointed out, it received all assents uh, last year. Um, it basically empowers central government to set new particulate standards, PM two point five standards. Um, currently there are no statutory PM two point five standards, there are only PM ten standards. So as I said earlier, the shift is now towards the finer particulates. Um, empowers is slightly misleading because it actually requires the government to set new standards by the end of October of this year. So um, there's going to be some changes coming, coming, coming very shortly. We don't know what those standards will be, clearly. Um, DEFRA has already given an indication that they will be going out to public consultation in the spring, but similar to Campbell's presentation, DEFRA are going to be busy this spring because there's a new air quality set of standards that they need to adopt. Um, we have attended a webinar by DEFRA um, earlier on in uh, December, which has given some indication as to what the direction of travel might be for particulates going forward. Um, which is that um, all local authorities up and down the country, regardless of whether or not they have an air quality action plan or man, associated management area, will be required to deliver certain control measures to reduce overall PM two point five emissions at source. One of the um, one of the challenges with controlling PM two point fives is that they, whilst they do arise from local sources, they are also incredibly um, regional and even national in terms of this, in terms of where they, where they come from. So for example, Leicester City up north engaged in consultants to do some So for example, Leicester City up north engaged in consultants to do some source proportion of the PM two point five in their city. And the report came back to suggest that something in the region of fifty percent of all PM two point fives to Leicester originate outside of Leicester. Okay, um, PM two point fives arise from the agricultural sector, so from farming. They are, um, a shipping is big source of PM two point fives. Other urban conurbations are a big source of two point five. So we only have to look down the road to Southampton and a significant proportion of our PM two point fives in Winchester are actually arising from Southampton. So we have no control over Southampton, obviously. So hence the reason why central government is going, well, actually, small local authorities have a limited level of control over these PM two point fives within their area. We need to look at this on a, on a much wider scale, on a, on a national level. So we challenge all local authorities to try and reduce, um, particulates at source. Um, interestingly as well, just going back to Leicester, they identified, I can't remember the figures, so I'm, I'm quoting this back at me, but there was a figure, uh, set against European standards of PM two point fives as well. And when you consider that Leicester's quite a way out of country, they actually identified the PM two point fives were coming over from mainland Europe as well. So you can see the problem, you can see the macro issue of, of, of trying to control. Um. Interestingly, the Environment Act remains silent on nitrogen dioxide. So the, uh, the current national standard for nitrogen dioxide is forty micrograms per meter cube annual mean. There is no suggestion that that will change going forward at the moment. Um, and indeed, on the final reading of, of the bill, um, they, uh, that, that point was, was brought before, uh, the, the, um, before Parliament, and they chose to remain silent on nitrogen dioxide. So clearly they're keeping, they're keeping tight, let governments keep them quite cautious about what those standards might be, if any changes going forward. About the same time, so back in November again, um, the World Health Organisation issued uh, a revised and updated set of air quality guidelines. Um, and again, hopefully you can see those little packs or they are on the screen. Um, and the, the, the ones that I've highlighted in yellow are the ones that are of interest, um, to us here in Winchester. And again, these will all relate to the annual mean standards for PM two point fives, PM tens, particulate tens, and also nitrogen dioxide. And that is, um, the, the final guideline levels for PM two point fives is five micrograms per meter cubes. Um, annual mean standard, that is a significant, uh, a significantly more stringent level than I expected personally, instantly, and I feel expected, and many of us in the, in the air quality sector expected. Um. I'm going to level with you, I don't know how we're going to achieve that. Because, um, as I say, even if you stop all traffic going through Winchester town centre, I wouldn't be surprised if we exceeded five micrograms per meter cube. The intensive price, you've got to take into consideration other multiple sources like domestic boilers. We're a, we're a, a city surrounded by agricultural sources. Um. Yeah, it's going to be very, very challenging for how we're going to meet that particular standard. PM tens, um, we are circa around about early thirties in most locations in the city. Um, so if you look at the interim targets on the screen or on your packs, um, we are currently well within the seventy standard of the PM tens for the interim targets. Um. It's not until we get round to the third target of thirty that we're sort of, yeah, we're, we're starting to be challenged. And obviously getting down to, uh, fifteen annual mean standard, again, that, that's going to be, I think that's going to be more achievable because PM tens tend to be more vehicle sources and local sources in particular. So we've got a little bit more control. Uh, but again, it's going to be interesting on how we're going to achieve that particular standard. And as I, as I mentioned earlier, nitrogen dioxide, there's nothing suggested within the Environment Act uh, in terms of new standards for annual mean. Uh, but the, uh, World Health Organisation has put forward a, uh, air quality by diode ten. That's obviously a quarter of what the current statutory standard is. Um. Conversations have been taking place, um, within the council between officers and, and, and members about looking at adopting our own, um, bespoke local air quality targets, uh, which seek to, uh, deliver better air quality for the residents of Winchester, so more stringent targets. Um, there is only one city in, in the UK currently that has departed from the national standards, which again, Oxford seems to be a, a, a sort of a blazing authority within the environment, environmental sector. So again, Oxford City Council, they've adopted, recently adopted their own thirty microgram per meter cube standard. Uh, and we have consulted with Oxford, um, in how and why they, they come up with thirty as opposed to say thirty five or twenty five. And it's very much, uh, based on, um, health research that suggests that for every one microgram per meter cube annual mean standard you manage to grow in terms of, um, particulates. Um, you, you achieve significant public health benefits. So they, they've taken that view, they, they've taken a direction of travel that there is no safe limit for particulates, taking the one and taking it down to thirty. Thirty they've identified as being achievable with the city of Oxford over a five-year term, which is the term of their air quality action plan. So that's, that's, that's a sort of, that's a guide, if you like. Um, that's, that's a sort of steer for us here in Winchester. But obviously, our, our air quality challenges are different to those of Oxford. So Oxford are a little further ahead than us in terms of their controls. So, um, Oxford have got even more, um, fighting, um, uh, differential charging prices for their car parks than we have. Uh, it's incredibly expensive to park on the centre of Oxford for a day. Um, they are, they've already publicly declared that they're going to have the world's first zero emission zone. Uh, so they'll make it, they're looking to actually prevent public vehicles going into the town centre and to the city centre. So literally physical barriers. They have bus gates as well, so you, only buses can go down certain routes within the city. So private light vehicles, your car, my car, which can't get through. So they, they've already deployed, uh, you can call it a ring of steel, but they make it very, very hard for, you know, you or I, the public, to drive into the town centre. So that, that, the hard measures that, that they could, or the hard levers, if you like, that they can pull, they've already done. If you look, if you read Oxford City Council's current air quality action plan, which you can do so by going on to their website, most of the actions within their plan are about educating citizens of, of Oxford to change their habits. So don't drive a car, get in a bog, warm, take the bus, take the train. It's all about getting people out of their cars so that we, um, reduce our reliance on owning our own vehicles. So that, 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 they're within the, they are now into the phase of trying to deliver behavioural change and constantly hammer home the message that it's in everybody's interest not to jump in your car just by default. So with that in mind, we've also, as part of our commission for the air quality consultants, we've asked them to do a second phase, a second part of the report, which is, if we were to adopt more stringent air quality standards for, for Winchester, based on our current data and what our actions have been to date, what could we feasibly realist, what would be a feasible standard to adopt for both nitrogen dioxide and particulates? And probably as importantly, how would we achieve it? What measures can we realistically deliver to achieve those targets over a five-year term? Um, once, well, that, as I say, that's part of the commission. So that, 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 that piece of work, hopefully those reports or tenders will be coming in next week. Phil and I will be going through those with a view to commissioning, so it's a piece of work for us. Um, we expect that report to be delivered to us by the early summer, at which point we'll come back to HEAP, we'll present that information to you guys um, for your, for, for, for your feedback. And then obviously go on to Cabinet for their permission to go out to a public consultation based upon the measures that we need to deliver. Or we were asking them to deliver, because there will be a commitment on, on behalf of residents of Winchester to make this work. So, um, just on to my last slide, in conclusion, um, air quality is steadily improving, um, and in the majority of locations, we are compliant with the statutory standards. The twenty twenty data is atypical, so it can't be used to undeclare on the current air quality management area or can't, can't be used to review. So we need to look at the twenty twenty one dataset in order to undertake that piece of work. And that will be fed to the consultants as part of their, uh, their work later this year. Um, we expect new finer, uh, finer particulate standards later this year, certainly by October, by the end of October. So that will set out a much clearer steer from central government in terms of what we as a local authority will need to do to control particulates. Um, the mention of the air quality standards or guidelines from, uh, the World Health Organisation, um, very stringent standards, already I'm getting a lot of, um, inquiries from the public about what we are doing as a local authority to beat them. Um, so there, there is an awareness out there in Winchester that these guideline standards are now in place. Um, and really just a mention, as I say, that we are looking to, uh, assess what higher standards and more stringent standards we can adopt within the city, whether or not they're realistic and what can we can do to, to actually achieve them. Uh, and we expect to adopt a new air quality action plan, if not by late twenty twenty two, early twenty twenty three. Thank you very much. Questions?
Um, thank you very much, Mr Ingram, um, actually for a very detailed and very useful, um, presentation. Um, I'm quite okay with this, but I think the stuff around the, um, the new guidelines and, you know, what it would mean to us and the point about the, um, where our um, PM two point fives might come from, um, is really good to clarify. Um, so Kansas to the keeper, I, I saw your hand, but I don't actually know if you would first.
Yes, we can.
Right, quick off the mark then, John, well done.
Thank you, Chair. Um, uh, and Mr Ingram, that was a really clear, really clear, really good report, so thank you very, very much indeed. Um, I, I, I think that we really should be as bold as possible in Winchester and the deep follow-up of the example. I suspect that was around, say, we'll agree with that. Um, and the, and the really key question that we all have, I suspect, is what practically can we do? It sounds like until we've had some expert analysis of that, um, it may be very difficult for you to answer. But it'd be interesting to get some ideas for us in any event. Um, I know in the paper, there's little reference to domestic wood and coal burning stoves. And no, from my, nowhere near, I mean, I, um, Frank is a real expert in this area, my knowledge is very limited. But I know that in last year, um, they identified that council with thirty eight percent of particulate matter um, in the UK came from domestic wood burning stoves. So is there something dramatic we should be doing in that area? Whether it be a district-wide smoke control order or something like that? That would make a difference? And does that actual source of particulate matter, is that a significant impact on in, in the district?
So, um, we are currently undertaking a joint, um, education programme with Southampton, New Forest and Eastleigh councils, um, to raise awareness of particulate emissions arising from combustion processes, mainly bonfires during the summertime, the spring of the summer, because obviously people are clearing out their gardens. And we're trying to encourage, um, our residents to take up the green waste collection service, which I know has been very successful, so there's been sort of joint working going on there. Um, but obviously during the winter months, it's, it's quite a popular, um, thing to have a wood burning stove in your property. And so we're also working on encouraging people to, uh, burn less, um, burn better, which essentially means burn, burn, uh, authorised fuels, burn dry wood, um, not wet wood. Um, we, we, we've fallen short of saying don't burn. This, we take the view that if you tell people not to do something, they generally go, don't tell me not to do, I'll do it, I like, thank you very much. So we're trying to, we're trying to adopt a very much more of a, uh, an educational, appealing stance to encourage people not to, you know, to, to consider their neighbours when they're, when they're lighting up their wood burning stoves. Um. It, it's, 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 it's having some success, we're getting a lot of really good feedback. Um, there's always the, um, the risk that your breaches have converted. I think there's the, the sort of members of, of society who are receptive to that messaging and others that are not. So, you know, in terms of how you affect behavioural change, we try and educate. The mechanisms are not there for us to prohibit burning, full stop, at the moment. So we've got to look to central government for, for that kind of control. Um, there are new bits of nuisance legislation we can deploy, so if somebody is repeatedly burning and causing a nuisance to their neighbours, then we can, we can use that piece of legislation. But you have to, you have to prove first off that they're causing, causing that nuisance. So, um, we would like to have a, a district-wide smoke control zone, if you like, where, um, you know, you, you're prohibited from, prohibited from having bonfires, uh, but these, we're just not there yet. Um, and I, I would also add that it would be quite resource intensive, a lot of people still do it.
Um, thanks, Mr Ingram, and the supplementary planning document was looking at trying to prevent that problem arising in the future in many ways.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. From, uh, we, we, uh, we, as I, as I mentioned in my presentation, we, um, we now have a supplementary, air quality supplementary planning document, which was passed by Cabinet last year. It is, to my knowledge, I'll caveat that, um, the first air quality supplementary planning document in Hampshire. Um, and it covers Winchester city, uh, plus a one kilometre buffer, so outside of Winchester's urban development area, if you can call it that. Um, any new developments are not allowed to have solid wood burning appliances installed as part of the development or open fireplaces. Um, of course, we can't prohibit somebody who then moves in to retrospectively fit a wood burning stove, which makes it a lot harder for them to do so. Um, so our hope is that we're not going to be adding further, you know, particulate sources from solid fuel burning, which might otherwise affect the air quality management area.
Um, Mr Ingram, could I please ask you to address Mr Tate's question before I take, before I take more questions from the floor, because he has waited very, very patiently. Um, I've made him know if you haven't, but if you miss anything.
Thank you. Um, so Mr Tate's question referred to, uh, a taxi driver in our district, John Boardman, who is the, currently the only taxi driver with an electric vehicle, an electric taxi. Uh, I'd also, um, like to commend Mr Boardman for investing in, um, great technology in, in running his, his particular business. Um, Mr Boardman and I have, um, been in communication on a number of occasions about this particular matter. Um, there is currently eighty-one rapid, um, electric vehicle charging point, which is up at the Worthy, um, Worthy Lane Car Park outside of the Winchester hotel up there. And it was originally, that site was originally identified, um, with taxis in mind because it's very close to the railway station. So the thinking was that if we encouraged the taxi community to take up plug-in technology, plug-in vehicles, they could nip across to the Worthy Lane Car Park for half an hour to charge their vehicles and then they could be on the rank. Um, when we went through the electric, the electric vehicle charging strategy, um, it seemed to become apparent that rapid charging points are very expensive to install. Um, they come in at something in the region of thirty, uh, sorry, about forty to fifty thousand pounds to install each rapid charging point. The reason being is that they have to tee directly off an electricity substation. So the number of sites for which you can have a rapid charger is, is, um, limited depending on the existing electric, electrical, um, infrastructure in, in the locality. Um, because it was so expensive, it was agreed that that particular rapid charging point be installed by, um, Joji, uh, the consultant's Joji, um, on behalf of their financier, which is, uh, uh, Stackcraft, which is a, a electricity generated company. So they, they financed the installation of that, that rapid charging point. Um, because they fully financed it, we do not have any, any leverage of control in terms of whether or not it's, it's dedicated purely to the taxi community. Um, they were very receptive to doing so if the demand was there. Uh, obviously, with only having one electric taxi in, in Winchester at the moment, the demand is just simply not there on that rapid charger, um, to merit dedicating it purely to the taxi community. So it's a little bit of a chicken and egg. However, we are doing further work, um, and I, I had, I had mentioned it, Mr Boardman. However, we are doing further work, um, and I, I had, I had mentioned it, Mr Boardman, with a view to putting in another rapid charger near to the um, the new sports centre. Um, it's a shame Andy's left, Andy Hickman's left, because as part of the, the Baltex project, there is an electricity substation in that location. And Joji are very keen to put in a rapid charger in that location as well. Um, because it benefits from being very close to the M three. So you've got the, the trans, transitioning community that are driving through, they're going, oh, quickly give off, so I know there's a rapid charger there. And obviously, because the sports centre has been developed, there is also a place for refreshments as well. And that's also one of the criteria. There's somewhere to go for a cup of tea and a bump. I can charge my car for half an hour, then that, that's, that makes it good luck. So all the, all the stars, if you like, are aligned for a, for a charger in that part of the city as well. So hopefully, we can make that happen. Um. Don't know if that answers everything, but, but uh.
Um, I think the only other point Mr Tate raised was, um, we talked about incentivising people to make the shift to electric taxis.
Yes, yeah. Um, so in answer to that, I am very aware that the likes of Southampton, um, much larger authority, much bigger taxi community, they've got something in the region of three and a half thousand registered taxis serving the city to our three hundred and thirty odd. So they are sort of ten times bigger than what we are in terms of the, in terms of the taxi community. They have managed to attract uh, government grants to try and incentivise the uptake of electric vehicle taxis, which we haven't unfortunately benefited from. So um, Southampton have financial incentives for their taxi drivers to take on EVs, because electric vehicles are, as I'm sure you are aware, quite a bit more expensive than, than standard, um, standard conventional fuel vehicles. So there, there is a a, a significant additional cost to the drivers. As I say, we can't, we can't, we can't offer that. So as part of our policy, we have um, given drivers that have plug-in vehicles, their vehicles can be licensed by us for an extended period. So they get a longer period to return on their initial investment. Which is not, it's, it's, it's a, um, it's not an upfront incentive, but it's not with standard, it's a, it's a it's an incentive to say, if you get an electric vehicle, we will, we will allow that vehicle to be licensed for, for, for longer than a diesel or a petrol vehicle. Um. We are looking to partner up with a uh, a company called Electric Blue, um, which um, specialises in providing uh, electric vehicles for the taxi community with onboard diagnostics, GPS um, tracking diagnostics, which will tell the driver over a two or three month period that they leased the vehicle for. It will tell them the number of miles that they've driven, it will tell them um, how much it would have cost them if they, if they uh, drove those miles with a conventional fuel vehicle. Um, it tells them how much they paid in electric fees. And it will calculate the savings over the life of that vehicle based on that two or three month period. So it will, it will essentially save them, provide them one of the reports saying, if you buy an electric vehicle, okay, it's going to cost you ten or fifteen thousand pound more at the start, but over a fifteen year term, you will save this amount of money, because it's a lot cheaper to run an electric vehicle than it is a diesel or a petrol vehicle. And also, it's a lot cheaper to run because um, there's no internal combustion engine, so there's less moving parts, so there's less things to go wrong. And, you know, they, they wrap the whole thing up into a report. And the, the hope and expectations then that taxi drivers can go, I can see how that's going to save me money. So I'll front load my investment, buy the electric vehicle and then I'll be quid in over that fifteen year term. The flip side, unfortunately, again, I'm going to have to mention the word Covid, is that the taxi community has been absolutely hammered by Covid in the last two years. So um, we've calculated that as a licensing authority, we are about thirty percent down on our taxi licensing income. So, you know, we're looking at twenty-five percent of our taxi drivers have left the trade in the last two years. So they're struggling financially. So even though we might be able to demonstrate to them, it's actually cheaper over a fifteen year term to get an electric vehicle, but that's fine, but I just can't afford to buy it. Just can't afford to buy the vehicle. So I, I don't have a, don't have an answer to that.
Um, thank you, Mr Ingram. Um, I hope Mr Tate has answered all, all of the questions. So thank you so much for waiting.
I will just make one last point, if I may, and I know I'm muttering on, but I'm more than happy to make, John.
That would be great.
Yeah, yeah, I will.
Great. So, sorry, sorry, committee, but I just didn't want to miss, miss doing that part of our job. Um, any more questions from Mr Ingram?
Thanks, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to first of all thank uh, Mr Ingram for the, the delivery of this briefing update. The team and Phil Tidridge, which is out there somewhere.
Yes.
And, and thank you to Hannah as well that's around. Um, I just wanted to check that in the report, it referred to, I think you said thirty-seven fast chargers and the one racket. We know it's the one. But it's actually, you said thirty, you said thirty-seven, but the report, the report says thirty-four. So am I right in saying the additional ones are the ones that have just been put down in the guilds hall somewhere here?
So the thirty-four that's referred to in the report, the thirty-four chargers as part of the electric vehicle charging strategy, but since then, we have uh, installed additional chargers in the, um, there's a couple of chargers at the sports centre.
And.
And downstairs, yeah.
And can I, can I, can, can I, and you mentioned a tea in a bun, you, you don't get that at the leisure pub, because they only do fruity drinks. And I just thought I'd mention that. Um, and then following on, you mentioned about the monitoring equipment. How much is the monitoring equipment? Because you mentioned it's been moved from one area of Winchester um, outside the Cheshle to Romsey Road. So I just wondered how much that piece of equipment actually costs? Do you know? That you referred to? Thank you.
Seeing as Phil has been waiting for so long, I, I, I'm going to give him an opportunity to answer that particular question. I don't know if you're there. Yes, he is.
Thank you, David. I, I am. Chair, I, I am here. Um. The answer to your question is a NOx analyser is ten thousand pounds. And a PM analyser is thirty thousand.
Um, sorry, Mr Tidridge, thank, thank you for sticking with us this evening and for answering. Um, are all NOx analyzers the same? Um, they don't, do they all cost ten thousand pounds or are there different types, just for clarity?
There are different types of NOx analyser, um, depending on the level of certification you require. Um, there's something called the AURN standard, which is a standard you need to meet to be completely confident of the results. There's really only one methodology that you can use for that. And so they are plus or minus a smaller amount, roughly the same price. There, there are then the other indicative analyser that you can use, such as David's referred to, the diffusion tubes. And we also have another indicative analyser we've just installed at Twyford. Uh, these are cheaper, but the data's not as accurate. Uh, I hope you can hear me because I'm getting dreadful feedback. So hopefully it's coming clear to you.
Um, it sounds to us like you're, you're very loud and very clear. So, um, we can definitely hear you.
Thank you.
Councillor Cook, could I ask the supplementary one, very quickly, we'll go on, yes, that's the, the possibility of having a second, um, charger that you referred to, Mr Ingram. How soon can that be installed? You said the company is very interested in installing another super fast charger. How soon can that be done, please?
I, I, I'm not going to guess the answer to that question. I mean, my understanding is I've, I've put, um, Andy Hickman and Joji together to, to, to make that happen. So I'm no longer actually privy to that particular part of the Baltex project. So um, I, my understanding is that um, once the agreement has been made, it would be relatively easy to, to install. The only problem is, is a bit of a lead-in time with the hardware. So the actual electric vehicle charging units, as you might imagine, there's a, there's quite a big demand on those at the moment. So it can take anything up to sort of six months to actually get a hold of one.